With the Virginia Beach City Code 2-21, and by the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Virginia Beach, I hereby call a special session of the Virginia Beach City Council to hold city council discussion and a resolution in support of the Second Amendment rights, Monday, January 6th, 2020, 4:00 p.m. to 5:30 p.m., which we did have, City Manager's Conference Room, Building 1, City Hall, 2nd floor, 2401 Courthouse. And following the discussion, City Council will hold a special formal session in order to take public comment and then consider the resolution on Monday, January 4th, 2020, 6:00 p.m., City Council Chamber, Building 1, City Hall, 2nd floor, 2401 Courthouse Drive. January 6th. My apologies. Okay, I'd like to open up with a statement, please. I've always said that good government should never fear and engage an educated public. We should embrace it and encourage it, and let me assure you, your voices are being heard. This resolution is a reaffirmation of the oath that we all take to serve on this body, that we support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of Virginia. And we frequently voice our wishes to our delegation in Richmond when we pass the legislative package, and in fact, we have three resolutions on tomorrow night's agenda to request supportive legislative action in Richmond. As a Dillon Rule state, we require the support of our General Assembly to do most anything in this city that isn't a power explicitly granted to us. We have citizens who are very concerned about the issue of the mass shootings, and we have been made aware of the members of the Brotherhood of Other Cities. We care about all people and all points of view. This resolution is balanced and in keeping with our Constitution and recent Supreme Court decisions, and we ask that the General Assembly respect citizens' rights as they deliberate in Richmond over these very important and emotional issues. Reasonable regulations are not, is what stakes here, but some proposal turn countless law-abiding citizens into felons overnight. Bills like this are not reasonable. We stand with our citizens, and I employ people on all sides of these issues to respect the views of others, avoid being caught up in political rhetoric, and let's work together to respect everyone's constitutional right and work on solutions going forward. Thank you very much.
Mr. Moss.
I have asked the police officer to have them dial down the volume so it doesn't come into the building, so hopefully they'll get that corrected shortly.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Moss. We're ready for speakers?
The first speaker is Vincent Smith, and the next speaker will be Brian Parker, and after Mr. Parker is Joseph Belik.
Okay, once again, we're gonna maintain the three-minute, not cut it. I know we have a number, we may have 90 speakers, but everybody is going to have a voice, both sides to be heard. Welcome, Mr. Smith.
Thank you, it's good to see you all again tonight. Mayor, Council, good evening. I think I'm gonna surprise all of you tonight, because I know you expect me to come up here with a pile of statistics and studies and analogies and prose to try to convince you to pass this resolution, but not tonight. Tonight, I'm only gonna thank you for your hard work over the holidays, working on this resolution. I think I'm gonna thank you for doing the right thing by passing this resolution tonight. And lastly, I want to sincerely thank you for continuing to follow through on your promise from June 18th to include all of these good people in city discussions about firearms. In addition to our thanks, I want Council to know, after you pass this resolution, we are not gonna disappear. We're still gonna be here, supporting you and your message to the General Assembly in these matters. This is about all of our rights. This is not just about tonight and this resolution. You'll be putting your voice beside ours, and we will do the same for you. I don't need to opine about this resolution, because I have all these fine folks behind me to do that tonight. This is the real grassroots of this meeting, not me. I was just the person who was unlucky enough to be in the wrong place at the wrong time to have a voice. Mr. Rouse, I do agree with you in what you said today, that we do need to heal, but we also can't put off these actions forever. So, we can find common ground in there. But instead, I'm gonna spend the rest of my time tonight to ask all those in the room to only applaud twice tonight. We have a lot of speakers to get through, and if we applaud for every speaker, we're gonna be here all night long, so I'd ask you to applaud once at the beginning, and only again at the end. What worked well in Chesapeake was, when you support something, somebody says, wave your hands. If you really support them, stand up and wave your hands, Council will be able to see your actions, and they will know that you support what's being said, and that will tremendously save time for everybody tonight, and we can get home and get some dinner before 2:00 in the morning. So, I appreciate you all helping me out with this. I've lost my place here. Yep, so, also, they're being very generous, allowing us three minutes. If you only need 30 seconds, only need 30 seconds. Say your piece, sit down, let the next person get up and speak. And I'm just gonna close up by saying how thankful I am that we all live in the greatest country in the world, where we're free to have this discussion openly, and I'll ask everyone to remember that we only enjoy these First Amendment freedoms because we have the Second Amendment to make sure that we keep them all. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Brian Parker, and then the next speaker is Joseph Belik, and after Mr. Belik is Philip Van Cleve.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Fortunately, apparently, Mr. Tower wasn't able to show up, but ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the grassroots movement. I don't know who Philip Van Cleve is, I never heard of him before a month and a half ago. I was part of the NRA, and because they decided that they don't want to have anything to do with things that I'm concerned about, I dropped my membership. I am a citizen. I heard about this, I'm not part of any group. I heard about this and came here a month ago. And now I'm here again tonight. I'm concerned about our rights. I'm not a felon, never did anything wrong, but, at this point, I'm mad. I'm over people treating me like I'm their child. I've already got two parents. I don't need more, up in Richmond. In Virginia Beach, we have the largest population in the city, or, in the state, in a city. We have the largest voting base, we have the largest amount of money going to the state. Now the state wants to spend my money and your money, more than $7 million, to hire 28 people to create a secret police that belongs to the governor himself, as part of state police. Saw that happen a few times in the past, went to war over it several times. The British tried to do it to us, we kicked them out. The Germans did it, they decided to create a Holocaust. Russians did it, conscripted millions, killed hundreds of millions. Who says we're not headed that way by people that aren't interested in following the Constitution? Our Constitution is the most important thing in this country. We are a country of laws, but if it goes against the Constitution, the law is repugnant and not a law at all. So, in closing, everybody... Because this has become such a hot topic throughout the state and throughout the country, people are coming from Montana on the 20th, people are gonna be paying attention to their elected leaders, and those that go the wrong way, or, I'm sorry, not the wrong way, those that don't vote the way that the majority wants are gonna be gone. And that's going from...
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Joseph Belik, Philip Van Cleve, and after Mr. Van Cleve is Brendan Mooney.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you very much, I'll start my own timer, try not to go over, be a good citizen here. I wanna thank Council for the work you have put into this, I appreciate that, you are trying hard to represent the citizens, and what the citizens are asking you to do is to stand with them, to protect their rights that have been dwindled away over the years. And gun control is one of the worst culprits of this. It started as a way to control minorities after the Civil War, and it's still all about control. And we know it's a canary in the coal mine, if our gun rights get taken away from us, you can get rid of the, kiss the rest of your rights goodbye, they're gone. Over time, they will disappear. Why do people need to go to church? Why this, why that, it'll all be gone. We'll look like Venezuela, and I'm sure the people in Venezuela, you know, 20 years ago, never pictured their country looking like it does now. Things can happen, so, we appreciate you standing with the citizens. This truly is a grassroots movement, I think that's what some on the other side haven't figured out yet. This isn't like Bloomberg giving millions of dollars to pay people to come in and protest, this is not that. This is neighbors talking to neighbors. We're a grassroots organization, this started before we got involved, we got involved after the 2nd County. We're helping to coordinate and focus things, but this is grassroots, this is people just rising up. I mean, our membership, well, it's now doubled in a month, but it was 8,000 paid members. We didn't reach 100,000 people that have been showing up. 100,000 have showed up across this state over the last six weeks. That citizen, now, some of them were asleep, and I understand, they should have been there voting, believe me, we tried to say, "People, you need to vote, this is different this year." But they'd gotten used to things flowing along, we haven't had any major gun control in Virginia for 20 years, so they were getting complacent. They're awake now, they're wide awake, and they're not happy, and they shouldn't be, they should have been allowed to sleep, but they're, at least with their basic rights being protected. But the governor's declared war on gun owners, people like you and me, they're not, he's not declaring war on criminals, and he admitted that all of the things he had put in for that emergency session, he admitted in the press, not one of them would have done anything to stop the massacre that you guys had here. It was aimed at people like you and me, it's the wrong people to aim this at. And, so, that's what we're railing against, we just want, really, we just want to be left alone, we're the good people, we follow the rules, we play by those rules, we don't get arrested, we don't cause problems, why can't you leave us alone? That's basically the message out there, and my time's almost up, I don't want to run over, but, thank you very much, I do appreciate the effort, I appreciate the politeness that we're always received here, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Brendan Mooney, Cassidy Browning, and then Timothy Anderson.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, and esteemed City Council, I really appreciate you guys' time. I want to give a special shout-out to you guys' fire department and your police, they are beyond professional, so I want to give a special shout-out to them all. I come to you as an executive member from VCDL, like Phil kind of echoed, I'm not gonna echo a lot of those points, but just, I'm a Virginia Beach citizen. I moved here back in 2009, when the Navy dropped me off here as a simple enlisted guy. Since then, I've started a family, my wife and I, we live over in Landstown, and I'm proud to be part of Virginia Beach, this is the best city in the state. I'm sorry, Chesapeake, if you're listening, I'm really sorry. I own a business here, I own a small, little IT company. I don't want to make my contractors or any of my business partner a felon, because he simply wants to carry something to protect himself. My business lawyer, he's Jewish, and he is facing antisemitism daily. Some of his friends up in New York are actually being attacked, as we very well see, and the way they're defending themselves is with America's most popular rifle. I have friends in the LGBTQ community, and I will say that they're in fear, they use some of these weapons to defend themselves, that would be very well felonies with SB-16. So, I implore you, Mayor and esteemed Council, please send a message to Richmond saying that, hey, I want to stand up and help protect these minorities that might be persecuted if gun control goes through. I'm gonna keep it short, and I really appreciate you guys' time, God bless all of you, thank you.
Cassidy Browning, Timothy Anderson, and Joshua Kellogg.
Welcome.
Hello, how are you? Okay, a lot has been said about the people, from the people since the election and subsequent sanctuary movement. Honestly, I don't know how much more I can be adding to this, but for what it's worth, here are my two cents. Today, I'm not only representing as a wife and a mother of seven, but as the state leader of the 3%ers Original Virginia Chapter. We are part of a national organization made up of patriotic citizens who love their country, their freedoms, and their liberty. Contrary to the rumors, we are not anti-government extremists, we're actually pro-government, just so long as that government abides by the Constitution and remains for the people and by the people. There is so much overreaching in these proposed bills, that I'm unable to choose one specific topic to argue against. I'm against it all. Our organization is against it all, and as a matter of fact, the infringements that are on the books now are more than any reasonable patriot can be expected to accept. There's a very good reason why our founder-fathers wrote the Second Amendment the way they did, shall not be infringed. No exceptions, no subtext, clear and concise, they just lived through that reason. We, the people, have allowed our government to get too big, give themselves too much power. The government we have today is in direct opposition to what we envisioned back in the days of the Revolution, and the hope that followed after it, all but gone. We really have only ourselves to blame, we get it, we were busy fighting the wars, working the farms, raising families, and being outrageously taxed for all of it. We accept where we have gone wrong, and we, the 3%, are awake now, and we have our, we want our rights back, we want our freedoms and our country. We are not seeking to overthrow the government, no, we just want to live our lives. We want to create, we don't want to create violence or incite a rebellion, only a fool or a madman would be interested in that. We have, though, an oath that most of us have taken, and we fully recognize that we, among other patriotic organizations, will be the defenders of the people and their Constitution from corruption, injustice, and tyranny, and we will do whatever it takes. We are not, excuse me, it has been said by our governor that if these laws were to be placed, that confiscation would be an option. Now, we are not a first-force organization, violence being the last resort and only in defense, we take our principles very seriously. That being said, using violent, using arms to violate the rights of the people, forcibly removing constitutionally protected property can very well be seen as a use of force. How far is our governor willing to go to first force his brain of tyranny on its citizens? The three, now has come to time to pay up, but one has to wonder if it would be more beneficial just to let the people of Virginia to live their lives at peace. Now does not have the time, have to be the time to replenish the tree of liberty, or does it?
Thank you very much.
Timothy Anderson, Joshua Kellogg, and Timothy Kestner.
Welcome.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor. So, I wanted to talk to you about how we got ourselves here. Dick Sazlo produced a bill called Senate Bill 16. That bill, on its face, is a gun forfeiture bill. There are people in this room that purchased firearms lawfully, that without those, that after Senate Bill 16 passes, would make them felons to own, okay, that's how it started. We then have Governor Northam saying, "We're looking actively at confiscation of firearms," okay? We then have Congressman McKeachan saying that the governor should deploy the National Guard if the local police don't enforce the laws. The rhetoric from the Left is amplifying and amplifying and amplifying. That is the reason that the counties across the state, the cities across the state, have stood up and said, "Hey, we're a constitutional city, we're a sanctuary city," whatever you want to call it. It is about a check to the state-elected officials that the citizens are concerned with what is happening from our elected politicians. You have no authority to really do anything here, right? There's not much you can do, but you can sign a resolution that already reinforces what Virginia Beach is, which is a constitutional city. I would like one of you to raise your hand and say, "Virginia Beach is not a constitutional city," because it is. We are under the laws of the United States, you have all sworn oaths to uphold and defend the Constitution. Voting yes to saying we are a constitutional city is not betraying anybody who may be for gun reform, it's just sending a message to the legislatures that, hey, let's dial the rhetoric back a little bit, let's listen to the people, and let's try to find some reasonable solutions to common problems. And that's all this is, you can't say no to this.
Thank you very much.
Joshua Kellogg, Timothy Kestner, and Clarence Canterbury.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Josh Kellogg, and I'm a lifelong resident of Virginia Beach, a retired Navy veteran, as well as a being a registered and active voter. First, thank you for calling this special session to ensure Council could hear from the citizens about this issue while it is on the agenda, and in time to vote on the resolution, so that the General Assembly can be made aware of Virginia Beach's position before the General Assembly convenes on Wednesday. It is often said that decisions are made by those who show up, well, you saw how many people were here on December 3rd. As some way pointed out, not even the issue of a light rail brought so many citizens to your door, or had such vast difference between support and opposition. And while I personally would have preferred that the resolution before you tonight contained a statement denying the use of city resources to support unconstitutional laws, and as well as establishing Virginia Beach as a second man, a sanctuary city, it does not. However, I am here to urge you to vote in favor of this resolution, a resolution that expresses continued support for all provisions of the United States of Virginia constitutions, expresses support for the rights of law-abiding citizens to keep and bear arms, and urges the General Assembly and Governor not to violate either the US or Virginia Bill of Rights, declares the city a second constitutional city, supports the actions of other localities who are making their positions known, and directs the city manager to forward this to the governor. That's it, that's all it does. Virginia Beach isn't saying we're gonna ignore laws, create militias, deputize every law-abiding citizen, this resolution only says, "We're gonna support in our state and federal constitutions." So, I believe, I personally believe that due to the language in this resolution, any and all nay votes would be seen as a violation of that respective Councilmember's oath of office. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Timothy Kestner, Clarence Canterbury, and Conrad Schisventer.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, Councilmen, Councilwomen, thank you for being here tonight. I'm fortunate to be early, and all of you have to sit, and sit through all of us talking to you, so, thank you for being here tonight. This morning, Councilman Tower posted a message regarding his opposition to the proposal, and expressed his regret he couldn't be here tonight, his apology, apology accepted, Councilman, I'm sorry I can't deliver my response to you in person as well. His concerns, maybe summarize, following points. He raised the issue, "Are we supposed to read through thousands of bills?" Fortunately, no, you don't, I'm sure all of you are well familiar with the people behind you and how much they support this. Don't worry, we'll ring the phones off your hooks, you don't have to read a single bill, we've got you covered on that. His next concern was that this fails to strike a balance for gun safety and promotes contempt for the rule of law. He's right here, this is not about balance for gun safety. The phrase "shall not be infringed" is not about balance, it's about the rights of the This one actually made me pretty upset, and when he said this, it was like, I'm gonna have to try and not be Greta Thunberg up here. How dare you, how dare you? He raised a concern about our prime financial base. When you talk about it like that, it makes it sound like it's a cut of meat, and it's like your mouth's watering, and it's like, oh, about all the money. It's not the time to be talking about money. He wanted to lecture us about the insensitivity of this bill, or this proposed, this proposal we're discussing here. I think what's insensitive is talking about money, as if it's a gigantic concern with this legislation. There's gonna be a bunch of other cities around Virginia that are passing this, I don't think you have anything to fear about people not coming here because of what we passed tonight. Finally, he talked about a duty to provide the safety for the citizens of Virginia Beach, and that this resolution won't protect them, won't protect us or the visitors that come here. He's also right about that, but he's wrong to say that his duty is to provide for our safety. That's not something that the government can provide for us. My time's nearly up here, and I'm not sure how to finish this, I went a little too long, didn't I? Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your time, I urge you to please vote for this. You cannot protect our individual safeties, but you can protect our rights. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Clarence Canterbury, Conrad Schisventer, and Reece Greenman.
Welcome.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, thank you for having us tonight, thanks for calling this special session to address our concerns, it's greatly appreciated. I know there's a slew of other places everyone would like to be tonight. Personally, myself, I'd like to be home with my wife and two children. Unfortunately, we're called to do something greater tonight. As the previous speaker said, you are our local government, however, you do not have a duty to protect us. The Supreme Court has ruled numerous times that that is not the case. Not only do you not have a duty, you can't, it's impossible. No matter how many police officers we can fit on the budget, they cannot be everywhere. Just recently, December 11th, there was a home invasion here in Virginia Beach. Three men kicked in the back door and the front door at the same time of a citizen's residence, and shot him, and were demanding drugs. As of tonight, those three individuals are still unaccounted for, right? The police are not there when you need them, they're there after you need them. All we're asking for are the choices to defend ourselves the way we need to, okay? Anyone who's ever handled a firearm will be able to tell you that no one-size firearm fits everyone. I'm a small-statured person. One of the rifles that they want to ban, the AR-15, is typically suited for me for that very reason, because it is adjustable, right? It can be made to suit my stature. Please do not take away our right and our choices and our self-defense, because it is not your duty, it is not your responsibility, and it is impossible for you to defend me, that is up to me. Thanks for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Conrad Schisventer, Reece Greenman, and Michelle Riley.
Welcome, Conrad.
An elaborate performance, especially as part of a promotional campaign, is known as a dog and pony show. Tonight, in this assembly, sort of a dog and pony show, and I really don't want it to be. Gun violence is a deadly daily occurrence, we're only feet from one of that fact's darkest moments, but tonight isn't to stop that, tonight isn't even to provide a barrier to gun laws proposed. The noble Councilwoman Abbott saw to that in explaining it has no legal power at all. I guess in that sense, some who voted for the legislators to pass those laws could take solace. However, it is still that dog and pony show. It's still a symbol, a symbol of the more glaring, all the more tacit, that it was chosen on a night that the Virginia Beach Democrats hold a meeting for organization, and a councilman who was a part of that organization is out of town. We all see the show. And we see the show, this grand illusion put forth by the movement itself, this movement elevating firearms to that of idolatry. It is only said as such because this ignores the most important part of the Second Amendment, to secure a free state. And the charlatans want no free state, because I watch as they wish to form a militia to guard against gun grabs, but not against drug laws, against gay marriage laws, against locking immigrant kids in cages, against police brutality for minorities, against corruption of government. The Black Panthers fought to secure a free state, citizens of Athens, Tennessee did in 1946, look that up. But the lack of proposed sanctuary city status from other oppressive state-city laws is silent, it's deafening silence, from those who would rather fight with Robert E. Lee and Stonewall Jackson than John Brown or Nat Turner. Freedom, justice, and brotherhood for all.
Thank you. Thank you.
Reece Greenman, Michelle Riley, and Victoria Nichols.
Welcome, Reece.
Good evening, Mayor Dyer, members of City Council, Mr. Stiles, acting city manager. Speaker 8 actually covered the points that I was going to discuss this evening, so I'm not gonna be redundant and go over that. I was fortunate enough on my drive here to watch your working session, and Barbara, maybe you and I need to get together, while you may have read the Constitution, I think you didn't actually understand the Constitution, and I don't mean that to be mean, but we should As I've come before you so many times, you know, we, the people, you have no authority other than to protect our rights. other than to protect our rights. And you were saying, Barbara, that you were concerned about this resolution for a number of reasons about it, you know, not being constitutional and dividing us. It is the function of you as an elected representative to serve we, the people, just as it is in Richmond and at the national level. You don't have a constitutional issue other than to support the Constitution, as others have said. Sabrina, I understand, you know, part of what your concerns are. And I think all of you guys are just misunderstanding the role of government. It really is. I understand what you're trying to accomplish. I understand the need to deal with the problem of people shooting people. But first and foremost, as a country, everybody in government has to stand up for our constitutional rights, or we don't, we don't have rights and liberties, as others have told you. We've covered this ground before, and I'm just not going to be redundant. I applaud, I appreciate that you are going to pass this resolution, and I thank you for that. Michelle and I went to several cities, and it was interesting speaking to different city councils and all the things and how they handle things. And I've got some tips for you on how we could do better here in Virginia Beach based on other cities that we traveled. They have some good ideas on how we'd interact. But lastly, something to consider for all of you. The problem you're facing is a systemic problem with the General Assembly. They should not be passing and signing into law unconstitutional law. And the problem we have at the General Assembly is there's no review of the constitutionality of these laws. They get enacted and signed into law on, you know, July 1st by the governor, and then you, we have to take them to court and sue. But in the meantime, everybody's a felon and you confiscate our rights and trample upon our, it's tyranny. So the real problem is we should not be passing unconstitutional laws. And these laws that have been prefiled are flagrantly a violation of our constitutional rights. It's not a question of opinion, Barbara. It's a fact. So we need to do a better job in the General Assembly, making sure that laws that touch on our constitutional rights are adjudicated and deemed to be constitutional beforehand. And I'm almost out, I am out of time. So I'm going to get together with you and encourage you to put something in your legislative package to fix that problem.
Thank you, Reece. Appreciate it.
Michelle Riley, Michelle Riley, Victoria Nichols, and Leonard Johnson.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Dyer, Vice Mayor Wood. Thank you, council members Moss, Abbott, and Wilson for sponsoring this resolution. I am not eloquent, but our forefathers were. And I just wanted to give you guys a couple of quotes that, to think about. Thomas Jefferson said, "All tyranny needs to gain a foothold is for people of good conscience to remain silent." So I think that says a lot, considering that these rules, these laws that we're possibly going to get are about as tyrannical as they come. Thomas Paine said, "It is the duty of the patriot to protect its country from its government." That's another one that kind of speaks volumes to me because...
Folks, please.
I'm sorry. Samuel Adams said, "It does not require a majority to prevail, but rather an irate, tireless minority keen to set brushfires in people's minds." This is a tireless minority. We're not going to stop talking about this. This matters more than appear. It matters more than how y'all spend our money. This is so basic. This is, we shouldn't even be having this discussion. But we all know that elections have consequences, and so here we are. I'm thankful that you guys at least are having this conversation. I know that this is a super touchy subject, especially after what happened here in May that hurt everybody in this city, everybody. But nothing about any of these rules protects any of us from that. I am a single mother. I have three young daughters. People are being human trafficked, whether you want to hear that or not. It's not tinfoil. It's real. I would like to know that at least I have a chance to protect myself and protect my kids. So anyway, thank you all.
Victoria Nichols, Leonard Johnson, and Peter Smith.
Welcome.
With all due respect to Neil about Virginia Beach for once, Chesapeake beat you to the punch. Follow our lead. I want to thank police security and anyone, open or concealed, caring for protecting our freedom to assert our First Amendment rights. I support your two-way amendment, but suggest adding, A, no city resources used to enforce unconstitutional laws, militia creation, and lobbying for the two-way movement to your 2020 state lobbying list. The Malfort Act has demonstrated the government will deliberately strip citizens, especially minorities, of their guns to stop them from asserting their civil rights. Guns level the playing field for groups like the handicapped, military spouses and families left behind, women, domestic violence victims, poor and the minorities. The state says we deserve rights to the ERA, voting on homes, cars, create businesses. Women can have abortions. They want us to pay 50 bucks for weed possessions, but they can't trust us with guns. The San Bernardino attack on the handicapped, it was a mass shooting, killed or wounded more than Sandy Hook and Stoneman Douglas High. With fewer and fewer police translating to longer response times, law-abiding citizens, taxpayers, and voters demand the right to defend ourselves from criminals. Without that protection, the underlying message is we deserve to die rather than defend ourselves. Where's the equality for us? I work full-time. I have college degrees in computers. I'm not ignorant. I mortgage cars, participate in local city affairs, and I pay full taxes like everyone else. The handicapped can shoot. It just might not be where you want us to shoot. You see, disability does not equal inability. We deserve that. Last thing is I want you to go to the state with my motto in mind, because my ammo is going to hit you where the good Lord split you. Get on.
Thank you.
Leonard Johnson, Peter Smith, and then Diana Howard.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for holding this special session to allow some of the public to be heard. The resolution that City Council is proposing is a good start, but fails to achieve the protection of the rights of the citizens of Virginia Beach. The resolution does acknowledge that City Council supports the citizens and is committed to continue support of all provisions of the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of Commonwealth of Virginia, including the right of the people to keep and bear arms. I propose the City Council make the following modifications to the resolution. Amend the title to read, "A Resolution in Support of the Second Amendment Rights and Existing Commitment to Preserve and Sustain the Second Amendment of the United States Constitution and Article 1, Section 13 of the Virginia Constitution." Amend that now therefore be resolved by the City of Council of City of Virginia Beach, Virginia, section by adding the following two items. That the City Council hereby express its intent to sustain the Second Amendment rights of the citizens of Virginia Beach and its intent that public funds not be used unlawfully to restrict Second Amendment rights or to aid the unnecessary and unconstitutional restriction of the rights underneath the Second Amendment of the United States Constitution and Article 1, Section 13 of the Virginia Beach Constitu-, uh, excuse me, the State of Virginia Constitution of the citizens of Virginia Beach to keep and bear arms. And number two, that the City Council hereby declare its intent to oppose unconstitutional restrictions on the right to keep and bear arms through such reasonable means as may be approved by the board thereafter. We are at a time in our lives that most people thought we would, that would never happen. We were on the verge of losing the most important freedom that an American citizen has. Without the right to keep and bear arms, the rest of the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia will be taken from us. The governor of Virginia and his followers have drawn a line in the sand, and it's time for us to pick sides and divide. Will the City of, will the City Council of Virginia Beach stand with the citizens of Virginia Beach, or will you stand with the tyrants in Richmond? Which of you are willing to stand by the citizens of Virginia Beach? Make a motion to amend the current resolution and then second that emotion. If City Council does not amend the opposed resolution to protect the citizens of Virginia Beach and pass the resolution as posed or not pass it at all, you'll be choosing the sides of the tyrant in Richmond and become part of the group that contributes to the destruction of the country. We urge you to stand with the citizens of Virginia Beach. Thank you for your time.
Peter Smith, Diana Howard, and Philippe Demos, Demoss.
Welcome.
Good evening, council members. My name is Peter Smith, and I'm a resident of Virginia Beach in Punggol. I'm here tonight to voice my support for this resolution declaring Virginia Beach a constitutional city. I'm certain you've all seen the movement taking place in our Commonwealth over the last several weeks, but I'm not sure how many of you truly understand the gravity of it. I'm disturbed by some of the comments our elected representatives have been making lately. The level of dissonance or contempt required to have made them is frightening. To the members of this council who decided to show up tonight, I'm hopeful that you can see the truth within our eyes and hear the passion of our words. Contrary to the opinions of some, Thomas Jefferson wrote, "Rightful liberty is unobstructed action according to our will within the limits drawn around us by the equal rights of others. I do not add within the limits of the law, because law is often but the tyrant's will and always so when it violates the rights of the individual." I'm stunned by what I've seen in Virginia politics, that government representatives at every level are holding the people in such contempt. It's nothing less than total and reckless disregard by elected officials to the safety and well-being of our families, neighbors, and communities, especially those in law enforcement who are being placed right in the middle of this nonsense. Our lawmakers claim these laws will make us safer while they threaten us with lethal force in prison. They've mocked and insulted us, referring to us as children when they don't think we can hear them. They claim we hold contempt for the rule of law while they disregard it with impunity, demanding submission is the basest sentiment of a tyrant. They're claiming this is the will of Virginians, but I don't know a single Virginian who wants to live in a war zone. And lawmakers advocating for military enforcement of state laws makes this a war zone. I'm still waiting for our elected representatives to come out publicly against the views expressed by Congressman McEachin in that regard, and I hope for their sake and ours that they will never, ever cross that bridge. It's just incredible to me that they're even considering it. I've read the resolution today, and while it represents a small step in the right direction, it doesn't really offer us all of what we're asking of you. It should be well understood by all in attendance here that we hold our lives, our liberties, and that our future generations far above wealth and comfort. When I look around the room, I see family and friends, neighbors, all people that I would give my life to defend. I feel honored to stand here tonight because in my heart I know I'm standing for them, each and every one of them. I hope this council appreciates the importance of the decisions that lay ahead and realize that all government authority comes from the people themselves. We will not be, we will not submit to be ruled as lesser subjects, and we will never back down in the face of any threat. The rights we enjoy today were secured by the blood and toil of Virginians living before us, and the Virginians that I know live around us today are no less willing and are arguably more capable than ever of defending those rights. Thank you.
Diana Howard, Philippe Demoss, and Jerome Bell.
Welcome, Dee.
Thank you very much. Happy New Year, y'all. Thank you so much for bringing this resolution to the vote today. Can't appreciate it more. I didn't write a speech, but I did want to point out a few things. It took six seconds for a shooter to be shot down in church. Six seconds. How long would it have taken if they had to wait for a police officer to come and save them? How many more people would have died? I was in the grocery store the other day and somebody seen my gun save lives, and they said, "How could you do that? How could you wear gun save lives? Don't you know that guns kill?" And I looked at him, I'm like, "You're like 6'2". I'm like 5'2". Said, "If he wanted to hurt me, where's the equalizer there?" I said, "I can't carry a cot with me, but I can carry a gun." And then he understood. So Virginia is ground zero now, just like in the beginning, the founding of our country, Jefferson and Madison and Washington and James Mason, where they wrote the Constitution and the Declaration of Independence and the Bill of Rights to secure our liberties. We are ground zero. The world is watching us. I'm glad you're standing with us. Thank you so much.
Philippe Demoss, Jerome Bell, and Susan Miller.
Welcome.
I'm a little bit nervous, and I'm a loud talker, so I apologize if I get a little loud. I heard about this scenario a month or so ago, and I thought it was silly that we need to be a sanctuary city. I thought that was a waste of time. I still believe it is. It's a waste of time. It's a necessary waste of time. I think the second or third speaker said that some of our citizens have been sleeping. Well, I'm one of them. I heard about this sanctuary city law on Facebook from a relative, and I said, "That's fake news. That's not a thing." So I looked into it, and then there's a bill here, okay? And I printed off the bill, and I didn't prepare anything to, a speech or anything, but this bill that we're here talking about, the third page is the first reference to a gun on the third page. Regardless of the bill that you're introducing or that you're pushing or that you're backing or that you're going to vote for, it ought to be on one, it ought to be on the first page of the bill that you're pushing. I called Elaine Loria's office, I want to say this before I forget. I called Elaine Loria's office, our representative, she's not here. Scott Taylor's here. I met him. So, Mayor, you started with, you took an oath of office, and that's all I was going to say, but I rambled a little bit. I scribbled some stuff on a notepad. You took an oath of office to defend the Constitution, to protect the Constitution, et cetera, something to that effect. Do your jobs, all of you. Do your jobs. I was asleep. I'm awoke. I'm not affiliated with the NRA or any of these other teams of people here. To me, it's not about guns. It's about stuff, my stuff. I don't want somebody going through my garbage. You're damn sure not coming into my house, or you're damn sure not asking me what I have, whether I have them or not. It's my business. And I'm a law-abiding citizen, and I choose to defend myself and take responsibility for my protection and my family's protection. I appreciate the police officers that do an awesome job. They cannot be everywhere all the time, and sometimes they may need a little help. Help our police officers and do your jobs. So all these names on here, I'll be taking note. I haven't before, besides for Mr. John Demoss, because my name is Demoss, I voted for you. The rest of you, I don't know who you are. But I will be paying attention moving forward. That's all I have to say about that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Jerome Bell, Susan Miller, and then April Dean.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. Thanks, Mayor. Full disclosure, my name is Jerome Bell, and I'm running for Congress of the 2nd District of Virginia, full disclosure. But I'm not here as a candidate tonight. I'm here as a citizen of Virginia Beach. And I'm here today to let everyone know a little slice of history on gun control in America. This is the first time gun control has been a topic in America. Gun control regulations on the books right now across our nation passed into law right around the time the slaves were freed, okay? Right around 1866, when Abraham Lincoln was assassinated and Andrew Johnson took office. There was this thing called Reconstruction going on in the South. And what happened was with that, these laws were called black codes or black laws, which meant armed black men could not own guns. Armed freed black men could not own guns to protect their newly freedom, found freedom that they had in the 13th Amendment of the Constitution, the Civil Rights Act of 1866 and the Civil Rights Acts of 1871. Now, here we are 155 years later of struggle. We've come a long, long way. But now here in Virginia, we have a governor who's famous for blackface, who's famous for wearing a Klan hood. I don't know which one it was because he said he can't remember. We also have a governor that pushes infanticide even after birth. So now, how can I, as a black man, believe that he's trying to save lives with gun control? So now, how can I, as a black man, believe that he's trying to save lives with gun control? Our own Attorney General of Virginia supports removing our right to life and self-defense with no blowback. I guess it's okay because when Democrats do it, it's fine. Now, this governor and his henchmen in the General Assembly has the nerve to come at free Americans, black Americans, white Americans, Mexicans, men and women, with new Jim Crow gun laws masqueraded as red flag laws, magazine capacity laws, ammunition laws, gun registration, and also with the fear of prosecution if we don't comply. You know, I'm wondering how many of you guys sitting out there are going to vote for these new and improved Black Codes? You took an oath of office when you was elected. Let me remind you, you solemnly swore that you would support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia. Now, any one of you that vote nay to the Second Amendment resolution would be in violation of your oath of office, and you actually should resign. So, in closing, before closing, I'd like to leave with you two quotes from my founding fathers of Virginia. Since they fought tyranny of King George...
Thank you very much, sir.
...we are fighting tyranny of King Northam.
Thank you, sir.
George Mason said, "To disarm the people is the most effective way to enslave them."
Thank you very much.
Susan Miller, April Dean, and Tim Scarry.
Good evening.
Good evening. I've been a Virginia Beach resident since 1985. My row wasn't even mayor at that time. Who could ever imagine a time in our Commonwealth where a group would petition the government to please take away as much as possible of our natural-born rights to self-protection? They say that the Second Amendment is too dangerous for regular citizens. Yet, here we are. We have a governor who is salivating at the chance to dismantle our rights to keep and bear arms, and threatens us with, quote, "consequences" if we stand up for our rights. There's a congressman who suggests activating the National Guard is appropriate for confiscating guns that have committed no crimes. The two-way sanctuary movement is a right and morally just thing to do. Our Virginia Constitution is under attack. We are purely a grassroots movement of citizens from this Commonwealth. We will not bend the knee to a governor ready to make us felons for the legally-owned, everyday firearms we have. It's just feel-good legislation that does nothing to make anyone safer. Our own Police Chief Cervera went on national TV with George Stephanopoulos and said, "No gun control could have prevented what happened in Building 2 on May 31st." So I ask you, council, how do more signed gun laws from Richmond politicians make people respect the sanctity of human life? The Supreme Court says police have no duty to protect citizens. Therefore, we are our own first line of defense. I personally made the decision to learn to shoot and protect myself when I became a grandmother. Since that time, this grandma went on to become NRA pistol instructor, range safety officer, distinguished expert in pistol marksmanship. After the events of May 31st, I became a co-leader of the Norfolk chapter of the National Gun Group, the Well-Aarmed Women. We meet on the range monthly and are focused on equipping and empowering local women to become self-protectors. Gun rights are women's rights. We refuse to be a victim. You need look no further than Texas church shooting last week to see the Second Amendment at work. Seven members of the congregation rose and drew their pistols upon the evil that came to do them harm. Of those seven, one was an elderly woman prepared to do what she needed to do when seconds mattered. I'd like to think she had grandkids, too. Please vote yes to protecting our two-way rights in Virginia Beach.
Thank you.
April Dean, Tim Scarry, and then Travis Fox.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you all for being here tonight. I wanted to speak a little bit to represent military spouses tonight and minorities. And the reason that I want to do that is because being a military spouse is sometimes very scary. You move to a new city, you don't have any relatives with you, you don't know your neighbors, and it takes time to get to know your neighbors. While I was a military spouse in the early 1990s, a person who I had no, a complete stranger broke into my house. Only reason I was able to stop him from coming at me and protect my young son was because I said, "I'm getting my gun," and I pulled a drawer, acting like my gun was in the drawer that was actually locked away in a cabinet. He took off out the door the other way. I could see him shaking as he was fumbling for the door. That's the only thing that protected me. A gun could be the only thing that protects other minorities. So keep military spouses in mind as you address this issue. Another sad thing that happened was while my husband was deployed with Andy Telfeskey, he got the news that his wife Catherine Telfeskey and their young daughter Ashley was murdered in their own home. They lived in the Lake Placid section of Virginia Beach, Virginia. That's supposed to be a safe area. We'll never get them back. We won't get Catherine and Ashley back. But what we can do is make sure that we allow for other military spouses to protect their children and minorities to protect themselves. So please keep all that in your mind as you proceed. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Tim Scarry, Travis Fox, and then Scott Taylor.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor. Vice Mayor, members of council. My name is Tim Scarry. I've been a resident of Virginia Beach since 1981. I am here this evening in support of this Second Amendment Sanctuary Resolution and to urge you all to approve the resolution and send a message to our legislators, not to pass laws that will violate our rights and liberties guaranteed to us by the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia. Let's face facts here, it's not about safety, it's about confiscation and control. I hear over and over again, no one is taking your guns. I direct you to re-proose legislation. None of these so-called common-sense gun laws being proposed by the legislature will do anything to stop or prevent crime and the criminal element from perpetuating offenses against the innocent and vulnerable among us. Instead, these bills not only infringe on our right to protect ourselves and loved ones, they also put us in danger of losing our personal property and our freedom. Many of the proposed new bills regarding so-called gun control will do absolutely nothing except make hundreds of thousands of legal gun owners instant felons and further violate the Second Amendment of the Constitution and also Article 1, Section 13 of the Virginia Constitution. The very same constitutions you all took an oath to protect and defend, along with many others in this room, including myself. Let's be realistic and truthful here. We know criminals by their very nature do not follow laws. Only reason government would have in taking away and controlling and limiting firearms from the law-abiding citizen is to exercise total control over every aspect of our lives. We've seen time and time again over the last century that the first step to controlling the citizenry is to first disarm them. We cannot and must not allow this to happen. If only the government and criminals have guns, how do we protect ourselves when seconds count and God bless them, the police are only, are minutes away, and we have one of the finest police forces in the state? I believe in the right and obligation of law-abiding citizens to protect themselves, their families, and loved ones, including those who cannot, for whatever reason, defend themselves. If you don't want a gun, don't have one. But don't tell me I cannot. I'm against any legislation that would infringe upon these rights, and I urge you to do the same by passing and sending the resolution to the General Assembly, telling them that you will stand with your fellow citizens and that you will not allow them to trample upon our God-given and constitutional rights. As I close, I want to leave you with one thought. One, two, three, four, five, six. That was the amount of time it took for a law-abiding armed citizen to stop a crazed criminal gunman and further preventing loss of countless innocent lives before the police even knew what was happening last week in a church in Texas. Ladies and gentlemen, I thank you for your time, attention, and urge you to vote in favor of the resolution before you receive me. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Travis Fox, Scott Taylor, and then Carl Hendricks.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen, and honorable council members, the tallest blade of grass gets cut down first. You don't have to worry about that. We stand on a precipice. In the eyes of many in this country, Virginia has become the proverbial tip of the spear. For years, for decades, government at all levels has sought to incrementally disarm the citizens, the rightful and supreme authority in this country. An act after act of congressional and agential fiat, the parity between military and citizen has been stripped away. Make no mistake, the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia is not perfect, but it is so nearly that many of its core tenets were woven directly into the fabric of the United States Constitution prior to its ratification. There was once an understanding in this state and in this country that in order to prevent the kind of tyranny the colonies endured as satellites of the crown, the people should be as well-armed as the government. Throughout the years, that idea has been whittled away and compromised in one form or another by sportsmen, by collectors, by enthusiasts. The Constitution doesn't grant anything. It acknowledges. It acknowledges that our rights are natural rights, that they preexist any form of government, and that it is the duty and responsibility of this government to protect and defend those rights, not to subvert and undermine them. The Constitution does not serve to limit the people. It enumerates and limits that over which the government has authority. And yet, immediately following the events of May 31, 2019, members of this body proposed a resolution to essentially gut statewide preemption before an investigation had even begun, and then once undertaken, an investigation which was woefully and considerably inconclusive. Do you think that the Assembly here present is unaware of tomorrow night's agenda? Do you think we won't pack this building again and again and again and again? There are many out there who suggest that these resolutions carry no weight of law. We are a Dillon Rule state, are we not? Even the Attorney General has gone on record disparaging our efforts. These resolutions are not intended to defraud or nullify proposed laws to be considered in the Assembly. They are acts of defiance. They are the collective voice of Virginia telling Richmond that we will not be bullied, we will not tolerate one more abusive act of unlawful and arrogant legislation against us. Virginia Beach has the opportunity to add her voice to the chorus. Shall not be infringed! We do not suffer tyrants here. Our flag tells us so. Our history tells us so. My heart tells me so. God save the Commonwealth.
Scott Taylor, Carl Hendricks, and then Kristin Randolph.
Mayor Dyer, honorable members of council, thank you for your time tonight, and thank you for all you do on behalf of our great city. I felt compelled to be here tonight to speak to you, to our fellow citizens, and to our neighbors on something that I believe to be unfair, unjust, and unconstitutional. Our citizens have the right to feel protected, to know that our children are safe in schools. They understandably want politicians working on solutions to reduce gun violence by criminals, ones who shouldn't have access to guns, those with mental health issues, interpersonal violence, illegal black market firearm transfers, gang or drug activity. However, the bills being presented in Richmond are a very far cry from the poll-tested slogan of common-sense gun laws that many voters thought they were getting and that they are not narrowly focused on actually solving a problem. Rather, politicians profess to tell us what is suitable to protect ourselves, our family and our property. The proposed legislation coming out of Richmond is nothing less than a premeditated strike against the Second Amendment, under the ironic guise of protecting citizens. But I'm not here tonight to debate gun control policies. I'm here to ask for your representation, to ask for your voice, to ask for you to speak out for us. According to CBS, the gun ownership rate in Virginia is roughly 30%. At that rate, that puts Virginia Beach's rough gun ownership right around 130,000 or so voting constituents. The vast majority of these citizens, fathers, mothers, sisters, brothers, sons and daughters, veterans and military members, would become felons overnight if the legislation is passed. And this is not hyperbole or rhetoric, it's reality. It's not fear-mongering, it's what's in the bill. I read the bill, and I've written and passed laws in Virginia and across this country. And now, our state, home to the likes of Washington and Jefferson and Monroe and Madison, we now find ourselves once again as a microcosm of the nation. Eyes from across the country are upon us tonight as we lead the struggle of our people fighting for our rights against our own government. I'm not here asking what your gun control position is or isn't. I'm asking you to stand with the over 130,000 folks that are law-abiding, upstanding, and voting constituents in Virginia Beach. So I'm asking you tonight to pass this resolution and send a message for us in Richmond. Thank you for your time, consideration, and God bless you all.
Thank you.
Carl. Carl Hendricks, Kristin Randolph, and then Glenda Craddock.
Welcome.
Good evening, council. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. Due to the careful and thoughtful comments I've heard here tonight in support of the Second Amendment and the eloquent and factual presentations delivered by my fellow gun owners, there's really no need for me to repeat much of what has been said. I'll just say that I support the resolution tonight, and that support has never been more steadfast. I wish it had more teeth in it, but I will take it. Kind of surreal to be standing here because I'm not sure when standing up for my rights became controversial. When did standing up for my inalienable rights make me a right-wing extremist, a hillbilly, a Klansman, an anarchist, part of the so-called gun lobby, an insurrectionist, as I was called in the newspaper today, and the list goes on? Yet simply fighting against the laws that violate the Constitution, we hear these lies and ever-increasing combative and escalating rhetoric being spread from the media and our elected officials in Richmond about us. So I respectfully take this opportunity to remind Richmond and this council that they and you work for us and not the other way around. Like others have said, I have never attended a City Council meeting until December 3rd of last year. I never heard of VCDL and all the other names mentioned this evening. When I learned of these prefiled bills and their impacts, I was stunned. I'd learned of their confiscatory nature and the scope, and I started to read and educate myself on them. I was stunned to learn that my constitutional right that specifically says "shall not be infringed" was in fact about to be infringed. I also knew our Constitution said I was not powerless to not stand up to it. This fight, and make no mistake, it is a fight, is not a race issue, a class issue, a gender issue, an education issue, or a party issue. I am an American citizen. This is an American citizen issue. As an American, a born and raised native Virginian, a 55-year-old father of three, soon-to-be-husband again, and a businessman, I come before you tonight to make my first stand in protecting my right to keep and bear arms. It won't be my last. I will not comply with any unconstitutional laws being passed in Richmond, so I want you to see my face, I want you to hear my voice tonight, as like other people here, I am resolute in this fact. And yet, instead of calming leadership from Richmond, our blackface-wearing governor and those in power continue to pour gasoline on a fire that they themselves started. The consequences of his irresponsible taunting and escalating rhetoric cannot be more dire. When the governor sounds like the leader of China, there's a problem. I'm prepared to do whatever it takes. I'm not alone in that, and I do mean whatever it takes, as I think we all are. The city is watching, the country is watching, and the world is watching. Let this city be an example of how the framers intended the Constitution to work when by design they made the first three words, "We the people."
Appreciate it.
Kristin Randolph, Glenda Craddock, and Marcus Groine.
Welcome.
Thank you. 10 minutes, 16 minutes, or 6 seconds? Which would you choose if you were surrounded by gunfire and needed help? 10 minutes is the average time it takes the police to respond to a shooting. 16 minutes was the time between the first shot in the parking lot of the Virginia Beach Municipal Center and the time that the police were able to detain the suspect. 6 seconds, now we already know that that is the time it took to neutralize, completely neutralize a shooter and save 240 people in Texas. This is the difference between gun-free zones that where law-abiding citizens are forced into unarmed helplessness and zones that allow law-abiding citizens to carry guns. The issue is really that gun violence and mass shootings like Las Vegas and Virginia Beach that are splashed all over the media, they break our hearts. They leave us angry and heartbroken, but the problem is that people want to control guns because they can, and the problem is we sadly cannot control mental illness, we can't control violence, and we can't control murder. No matter how many guns you take away from law-abiding citizens, this is not going to fix the problem. The good that comes from gun ownership far outweighs the risk. Don't I have the right not to be raped or murdered as I'm walking down the street and I am attacked by a person, a criminal, with a gun? Believe me... Believe me, that criminal, he's not going to register his gun, and he's not going to turn it over when the government asks him to. The crazy need for sweeping gun control is spurred on by emotional fear and ignorance of the consequences of taking gun from citizens. The Second Amendment was established as a guarantee of our freedom and a guarantee of unrestricted gun ownership. As Thomas Jefferson stated, "It is the aim that every man bear a gun." Why? Because bearing a gun allows us to protect our American dream, to keep our families safe and secure in our homes, but not only the American dream as it relates to us individually, but the American dream as it relates to us as a country, to protect all its citizens from tyranny and overreach of the government. Just look at what has recently happened in Venezuela. I am closely connected with a number of people in the opposition party of Venezuela, and it breaks my heart to tell you that if they had guns, they would fight back. They would fight back against the armed gangs that had taken over their streets, against their government that has destroyed their country and caused the starvation of their people. But they cannot, because they are unarmed and helpless. Armed citizens are a deterrent to tyrannical government and unarmed citizens encourage...
Thank you.
Glenda Craddock, Marcus...
...to think about if you would like to be the 6 seconds.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Glenda Craddock, Marcus Goring, and Merrill Rutledge.
Welcome.
Thank you. Welcome to you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I stand before you as a citizen born to this great country, a country itself born on the promise of freedom, drawing those escaping tyrannical governments and controlling dictators. Here they formed a government of limited power guided by a constitutional preamble that begins with "we the people of the United States." The Constitution may never have been ratified had the framers hadn't promised to add the Bill of Rights to give citizens confidence that this new government had clear limits and would not infringe on our most valued freedoms. I am here because Governor Northam and his fellow Democrats have proposed legislation in direct conflict with the Second Amendment. We all grew up knowing we could speak our mind, we could own our own property, we're safe from false prosecution, and we can defend ourselves against anyone, even our government, because we have an absolute right to bear arms. Limiting access to firearms only serves to make law-abiding citizens more vulnerable and strengthens the criminal element who simply isn't concerned with the laws we pass. You, as our elected representatives, are first in our chain of command. You represent us and only us, the citizens and voters of this city. We are here asking you to join the majority of municipalities in our state and declare Virginia Beach as Second Amendment sanctuary. We ask that you stand with us, and yes, defy our governor and the Democrat majority who wish to destroy the Bill of Rights. We hope you understand that you are not only the first in our chain of command, but you are also our last line of defense, for every movement begins and ends with the people and those who represent them. Let's not forget the words of Abraham Lincoln. "America will never be destroyed from the outside." If we falter and lose our freedoms, it will be because we destroyed ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Marcus Goring, Merrill Rutledge, and then Lexi Hickman.
Hello, all. In normal city council sessions, we all speak the pledge to allegiance. Not today, though, and I wonder why. I would like to take out of the pledge of allegiance a few words out, and that is "Republic, God, indivisible, liberty, and justice." We live in a republic, not in a democracy, under God and not under government. Individual and the government and his party of progressives, they divide this country in an unprecedented way. It is more than a threat to our liberty, it changes the way we are governed. Justice, if these bills go through, will only be granted to those governing elites, not to us. Basically, what the progressive Democrats want to create is a socialist Virginia. They want to raise the gas taxes by 25%, they want to imprison law-abiding citizens, they want to murder babies. I don't want to live in a society like that, and I believe you don't want to either. Thank you.
Merrill Rutledge, Lexi Hickman, and Ben Loyola.
Welcome.
Hey, how you doing? My name is Merrill Rutledge, 5999, Riviera Arch, Virginia Beach, Virginia. This is actually my first time ever being in front of you guys. The first time I ever heard from you guys was from an email, which was trying to infringe on my free speech rights. And obviously, the city attorney obviously got my message very clear. You don't infringe on our rights. I never thought I would see today that we give our white flag of surrender to domestic terrorists and foreign terrorists. We have a right to defend ourselves and our family, but now we are seeing a fight and war against ourselves, who we are as Virginia, who we are as a people, and everything we stand for. Today marks a real good day in Virginia Beach to change up what our perception is about the right to defend ourselves. We should be here talking about strengthening gun rights, not weakening. But today, now, we are faced with that. I'm asking everybody here in the city of Virginia Beach to recognize we have a right to be Virginia citizens, we have a right to our history and our tradition, and we will protect our guns. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lexi Hickman, Ben Loyola, and Cory Brechner.
Good evening, Mayor Dyer, and members of the Virginia Beach City Council. My name is Lexi Hickman, and I have called two cities home that have been affected by gun violence, my hometown of San Bernardino, California, and the place I choose to call my home, Virginia Beach. Our Second Amendment, like the rest of the Constitution, is something that I hold dearly. I support gun ownership, and I don't believe that any governing body should remove that right. However, today, I am standing here as a voice for responsible gun owners, supporters, and the lives of the voices of the families of the 15,666 lives lost to gun violence in 2019. A well-regulated militia is what is protected by our Second Amendment. The law at the time even required states and colonies to swear loyalty to the emerging government, as well as keep track of privately-owned weapons. And it's no surprise that this right was not extended to everyone, certainly not to women, and certainly not to other races such as black people or Native Americans. Beyond the love of our Constitution, this is where myself and other Second Amendment supporters diverge. Many who have voiced their support for this resolution have threatened eventual literal and perceived violence against those who oppose the resolution and any law enforcement bodies whose duty it is to enforce the laws that the courts deem as constitutional. These bullies include the advocacy group whose drafts of this resolution was made as the foundation for this verbiage, who were aware of this meeting five days prior to the general public, and had asked multiple people to come and strike fear and intimidation in those who oppose it. Many supporters of this insist this resolution is merely an affirmation of city council upholding their constitutional oath. My question to the council is this: If you need to use taxpayer money to draft, plan, and hold a special meeting and vote on maintaining the status quo of your constitutional oath of office, does that mean that you are not upholding your constitutional duty and oath of office already? I implore this council to stand against these bullies who use fear and intimidation to get their demands met. Tell them to take the issue to the General Assembly and the courts who have the sole power to determine whether a law is constitutional or not, because city councils do not hold that check of power against the courts. I respectfully request that the council continue their established duty and oaths and vote no on this waste of taxpayer resources and time. And if you still miss Mayor's discussion, then work with multiple advocacy groups on a compromise resolution, not just the VCDL, and not just one side of the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ben Loyola, Cory Brechner, and Andy Van.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members. My name is Ben Loyola, and I am running for Congress because this battle, this challenge, does not end here in Virginia, in Virginia Beach. It's happening in Washington, DC as well. I'm here to share my humble beginnings, where, because I was born in Havana, Cuba, I was exposed to what happens when a government disarms its people and takes over a country. Fidel Castro came out of the mountains, promising prosperity to everybody. The first thing he did, when people believed it, was he told the people "Banco para armas" was the call. "Give me your guns, and I'll give you bread." He took those guns away, and then he imprisoned thousands, and he killed tens of thousands in shooting squads, thanks to sacrifices my parents made. We came to America. We shot. It's unique around the world. Our liberties, our rights. I wanted to give back. I enlisted in the Navy, and I took my oath of office. I served 30 years as a Navy captain. I fought around the world. I fought a tyrant in Libya that disarmed his people as well. This is the greatest country in the world. I cannot believe we are here to defend our God-given rights to self-defense, to protect against tyranny. We all took oath of office. I took it multiple times in my 30-year career. I retired as a Navy captain to support and defend the Constitution. The Virginia Constitution predates the American Constitution, but it's all the same. They acknowledge our right to self-defense, to protect against tyranny, not just individual tyranny, against the government's tyranny. In my lifetime, I lived it. Please don't erode our natural God-given rights to protect yourself. What's happening here in Virginia is happening in Washington, DC. Our Congresswoman supports a bill to take away gun rights, and they've already sponsored money to set around for a buyback program if you want it or not. That's not America. That's not the shining city on the hill. That's not freedom. We just want to live our lives, protect our children, grow them up, run our businesses, work our lands, and live the American dream, but we must have the ability to protect ourselves against all enemies, foreign and domestic. God bless you, God bless America, God bless the Commonwealth of Virginia.
Cory Brechner, Andy Van, and Robert Downing.
That's a tough one to follow. Mayor, council, according to the Virginia and the US Constitutions, the General Assembly has not been delegated the authority to which it is attempting to legislate and make at least hundreds of thousands of law-abiding, tax-paying, productive gun owners in our state into felons for merely possessing semi-automatic firearms with certain arbitrary features. The city of Virginia Beach has every right to nullify this legislative overreach. In the actions against the Alien and Sedition Acts, the Virginia and Kentucky Resolutions of 1798 specifically call out nullification as the rightful remedy. And I quote, "Therefore, this Commonwealth is determined, as it doubts not its co-states are, to submit to undelegated and consequently unlimited powers in no man or body of men on earth. That in cases of abuse of the delegated powers, the members of the general government being chosen by the people, a change by the people would be the constitutional remedy. But where powers are assumed, which have not been delegated, a nullification of the act is the rightful remedy." While the Second Amendment is being specifically addressed by this council in this resolution, Article 1 of Virginia's Constitution also talks about the limits on the state of Virginia. These proposed laws are in violation of Section 9's ex post facto prohibitions, Section 11's takings prohibitions, and Section 13, which states, quote, "That a well-regulated militia composed of the body of the people, trained to arms, is the proper, natural, and safe defense of a free state. Therefore, the right of the people shall not be infringed." To ban firearms because criminals use them is to tell the innocent and law-abiding that their rights depend not on their own conduct, but on the conduct of the guilty and the lawless. Our Commonwealth is one of the safest states in the nation. Our firearm mortality rate is below the national average. We have the fourth lowest violent crime rate in the country. This is according to our own Virginia State Police. So the proposed $7.5 million of taxpayer money to enforce these unconstitutional laws, we flush down the toilet in order to ruin the lives of innocent, law-abiding people instead of addressing the real issues surrounding criminal activity. I urge you to vote in favor of this resolution to send a message to the General Assembly's proposed unlawful and undelegated overreaches. Thank you.
Thank you.
Andy Van, Robert Downing, and Daniel Holland.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the city council. Thank you very much for your patience here. This is going to take a while, and I don't know how you're going to do it, but thank you. And thank you for giving us all the opportunity to talk about this important issue. I think all of us who are running for Congress are coming up here to say hi, and there's a reason for that, it's because it's important. And so I'd like to use Councilman Towers' note that he sent to you all via Facebook just as a way of organizing. I think he pointed out in his first paragraph, the first concern that he had was following the laws, and that's exactly right. The laws should be followed. He's concerned about the laws of the General Assembly, and I'd suggest there are higher ones, and that is the US Constitution, which trumps that. And that's what brings us here today, because all of us, I think, believe that what is being proposed in Richmond violates that. But then there's an even higher law than that. Our rights come from God, which then, from that, the rights in the Constitution are derived. So please consider all of those laws that supersede the laws that are coming from Richmond and that your statement here tonight will counteract, hopefully. The other thing that he was worried about was protecting citizens, and I'd just like to mention to you that when I was in Iraq, in a war zone, war zone as mentioned earlier, we were all required, now remember, the army is a cross-section of society, all of it, good, bad, and when I was in Iraq, we were required to wear our sidearms, and there was never a problem. So as an example of people being able to protect themselves, I submit to you, that's an excellent example. Thank you again for your time and your attention to all of us. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Robert Downing, Daniel Holland, and Terry Centuri.
Can I get extra time? I apologize. My mic went dead.
Okay, thank you. Oh, sorry about the delay. Welcome.
Thank you, appreciate it, Mayor Dyer. Council, thank you. I just want to touch a couple of things that other people may not have touched on tonight. I certainly concur with most of what's been said. I did want to mention, my name is Robert Downing. I occasionally provide security and safety counseling for houses of worship. And a couple of people have mentioned about the House of Worship shooting in Texas that occurred at the Freeway Church of Christ. And people have said it took six or seven seconds. It actually took 3.7 seconds for the gunman to pull out a gun, murder two people at the church, before one of the church's security guards killed him. Has anybody seen the video? Do we think the guy that shot the bad guy was the church security guy? Is he a good man? Is he a hero?
Yes.
Under the state laws that are being proposed, that hero would be thrown in jail, because he had a Sig Sauer pistol, a 229, that had 15 rounds in it. The proposed legislation only allows 10. So that hero would have to go to jail for saving those people alive. That's just one example of what the new laws propose. Let me talk about another example. That was a silly example. Let me talk about how large the impact of the new laws. The ATF says that there are 423 million guns in the United States, which works out to be 1.2 gun... So we're now faced with 4,88640 guns going to be illegal in Virginia. Some people said hundred thousands. It's not hundreds of thousands, it's millions. So if you figure the cost of that, that those guns are now going to be illegal, I'll use a Glock. Say the Glock has three magazines, because most people have more than one magazine, maybe some holsters. All that's going to have to be gotten rid of. I'll use an example of, say, $520 per, which for some guns is very low. But at $520 per, be 4,88640, that's 2,126,92,800. The state legislature is not setting aside any money to do this. This isn't a buyback. They're just going to seize or destroy property. If I understand the Fifth Amendment of the Constitution, you can't take property without paying for it. So not only is this a violation of the Second Amendment, this is a violation of the Fifth Amendment. I would hope that you let Richmond know they shouldn't behave in that manner. Thank you very much, and have a good evening.
Daniel Holland, Terry Centuri, and Glenn Spence.
Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the City Council. My name is Dr. Danny Holland, and I'm a practicing licensed professional counselor with a doctorate in the field of psychology. I'm a therapist, a professor, a former law enforcement officer, and a trainer of law enforcement and civilian responses to active threats. I'm a published author and a subject matter expert on protecting vulnerable populations, and have spent more than twenty years developing training protocols used in schools throughout the Commonwealth. My wife, Dr. Jamie Holland, and I have served the families of those murdered in Building Two by participating in the death notification process for most of the twelve families who tragically lost loved ones, and are continuing to volunteer our time to provide care and support that is needed. We're not special. This gesture is just what our community is about, and is why our city is considered one of the most caring cities in America. These experiences and my professional training inform my request for this council to declare the city of Virginia Beach a Second Amendment constitutional right city, a protector of the Second Amendment. As a researcher and scholar on violence reduction and response, I believe the current operational definition of common sense gun laws can be best defined as void of evidence or any proven effectiveness. As one who studies human behavior, I understand the meaning, the well-meaning individual who tries to do something to attempt to homogenize complex acts of evil to a single cause or legislative action in hopes of stopping future acts of evil. It is my professional opinion that the laws introduced by the Commonwealth this week violate the Constitution while actually placing the citizens of Virginia Beach at an even greater risk of harm. Research indicates the majority of all these evil acts, ninety-eight percent, occur in gun-free zones and are over, are over in less than nine minutes, with police actively ending only one-third of them. When seconds count, even the best police response times take minutes. Last week in Texas, we saw the value of one citizen taking responsibility for safety in their community, and it's been said that it's not the scalpel that heals, it's the hand of the surgeon. This city has tens of thousands of citizens willing and prepared to defend themselves and others who would be made criminals by proposed legislation. One survivor in Building Two said when they heard the other gunfire, they exhaled because they knew somebody could stop him. At least three of our citizens murdered in that building tried to warn others and stop the killing. Those heroes were restricted by policy, from fighting with equal force. These experiences from our backyard simply do not fit into the creative narratives of some well-intentioned legislators. We cannot stand by while thousands around us are criminalized for being willing and prepared to stop evil in their presence from taking more mothers, fathers, sisters, and brothers from us. Voting to declare our city a Second Amendment constitutional right city is a statement to lawmakers across the Commonwealth to reexamine their efforts and hopefully allow the evidence to inform their intentions to find potentially effective solutions while supporting this Constitution. Thank you, and God bless each of you.
Thank you very much.
Aaron Centuri, Glenn Spence, and then Michael Maskell.
Welcome.
Welcome. Yes, I'd like to call attention to eighteen US Code, Section 242, Deprivation of Rights Under the Color of Law. Federal law there that, before we start going along with Richmond, before you use any city funds to enforce this insanity that's coming from there, we better think about this. The law we enforce today is the law that will get this city sued, maybe get somebody locked up, maybe this even provides for the death penalty if anybody gets killed in this kind of thing. We really should add something to say that there will be no city resources expended in these laws being proposed by Richmond. Second thing I'd like to say, as wonderful as the Second Amendment is, Article I, Bill of Rights, Section 13, Militia Standing Armies Military Subordinate Civil Power, the first sentence says that "A well-regulated militia composed of the body of the people trained to arms is the proper, natural, and safe defense of a free state; therefore, the right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed. That standing armies in time of peace should be avoided is dangerous to liberty, and in all cases, the military should be under strict subordination to the governance of civil power." That's the Virginia Constitution. Okay? Someone else mentioned that we were fourth in the violent crime category, you know? I mean, I think that's pretty good. This expenditure is bad. Myself, during Hurricane Isabel, I had, I had a generator, eleven people approached my property, they had their game faces on. I had a rifle slung over my shoulder. I didn't brandish it. I didn't say anything to them. They just stopped, looked, thought, backed up, thought some more, left. I, that generator was powering medical equipment. And I do believe that having that rifle, there was no cops to call, the phone didn't work, cellphone didn't work, the CB radio didn't work. Lastly, I'd just like to say, Thomas Jefferson said, "I prefer dangerous liberty to safe slavery."
Glenn Spence, Michael Maskell, and Aaron Young.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you, sir. Mayor Dyer, members of the council, I don't come to you tonight as a Republican or Democrat, but a son. A son of a mother who was a Virginia Beach public school teacher for thirty-plus years. A son of a father that was a volunteer in Virginia Beach Courthouses after twenty-five years of civil service. The grandson of a farmer that raised nine children and owned his own property in Prince essand County. The great-grandson of a slave in Princeessand County. I served a total of thirty years of military service, three of which was in the Virginia National Guard. I attended and graduated from Kimbleville Elementary, Junior High, and High Schools. I am a small business owner in the city of Virginia Beach, but most of all, I am a son of Virginia and a son of Virginia Beach, and like all of you, have gladly been a servant of this Commonwealth. I stand with you and all the good citizens that have shown up to express our comments and concerns and desires in your vote whether or not to make Virginia Beach a Second Amendment city, a sanctuary city. Many would like to make this a Republican thing, or a Democrat thing, a black or white thing, or even a rich or poor thing, but it's not. It's a constitutional thing, and it's just the right thing to do. Like many of you, I took an oath as a US citizen to support and defend the Constitution of the United States of America against all enemies, foreign and domestic. I know many people may believe that our Constitution is not up to date, but I believe that our country's forefathers did not leave anything out that could possibly lead our country or state citizens into tyranny. Even the flag of our great state, sic semper tyrannis, thus to tyrants, voices the spirit and the intent of our state and US Constitution and its amendments. And our preamble reads, paraphrased, "Provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity." Our posterity is our future, our children and grandchildren, which I have eight of. We, the people, we are partnering with you, sir, council members. We, you are elected representatives, and through our attendance and concern have expressed our desire to strongly encourage an affirmative vote, Virginia Beach, to join the other ninety percent plus counties and cities in the state of Virginia as a Second Amendment sanctuary city. I don't know the author of this phrase, but it still remains true. Bad things happen when good people stand by and do nothing. We need to do what's right. In closing, I'll say this. Heavenly Father, I thank you for everyone sitting here tonight. I pray your wisdom over the mayor and every council member. I pray your protection and blessings over them, irregardless of their vote, because you are sovereign in all things. And we give you all the praise and trust you in Christ's name. Amen.
Thank you, and thank you for your service.
Hello, everybody. Nice to meet you. Good evening. My name is Aaron Young. I'm twenty-two. I'm a civil servant. I come before you today to express my concerns regarding the future of Virginia. I appreciate being here, and, sorry, I appreciate being, this being on a Monday, since I haven't been able to make the other hearings due to work. But I asked for advice on how to write my speech because I've been giving a speech since high school, unfortunately, and was told to write from the heart and explain how the proposed laws will affect me, so here it is. I believe all of us here came today for different reasons, but for the same purpose. We do not want, we do not want our constitutional rights to be infringed upon, so my goal is to persuade you all to honor the oath of office that you took, and I took, to stand with the people in the Constitution against the people wishing to do us harm, foreign or domestic. Last year, Virginia Beach suffered a mass shooting a few buildings over, and we lost some good people. Well, Hurst had talked about that, and not necessarily in the government buildings, but in general, it proves that if someone is carrying, they can eliminate the threat and prevent loss of life sooner. I'd like to bring to your attention the recent event that happened a week and a half ago that many other people have mentioned already. A man named Jack Wilson killed the shooter from about fifty feet away with a single shot from a pistol. A headshot from fifty feet away, that's a really hard shot to take, especially because I shoot, I shoot a lot. And not to mention that it was a moving target. The shooter killed two people, but Mr. Wilson saved what looked to be about forty others. With Bill SB 64, it would prevent law-abiding gun owners from reaching that level of skill by making firearms training a paramilitary activity, and would therefore make everyone in this room alone felons. SB 16 would prevent me from carrying my pistol because my magazine capable is, my magazine is capable of having more than ten rounds. Not to mention, any gun control of any kind is a violation of the Second Amendment, therefore a violation of the Constitution, and shall not be infringed. If you truly care about the people of Virginia Beach, then I am confident that you will all make the, make us a constitutional city, and I ask that you stand with the people that elected you and help us fight back.
Thank you.
Michael Maskell, Larry McCaulkey, and Carrie Nunley.
Good afternoon.
Good evening. The mayor said earlier that this hearing was an opportunity to bring both sides into the room to talk. Well, clearly, one side is mostly missing from this particular room, and that's largely because of the conflict with the Virginia Beach Democratic Committee's reorganization meeting, which was scheduled for tonight long before this hearing was planned. But I've given up my ability to vote for new officers in the party, to come here today to urge you to defer this matter and take the time for everyone to be heard. Clearly, this is an issue that a lot of people have a lot to say on, and it deserves more than just a single session to consider it. But in the event that you choose not to defer, I'm here to give you my reasons to vote no on this resolution, and they actually have very little to do with the merits of the issue of gun control, but rather with the issue of respecting and preserving our Constitution and the Republican form of government guaranteed by it. By Republican form of government, I'm not referring to political parties, after all, today's political parties didn't exist when the Constitution was drafted. The Republican form of government the Constitution refers to and guarantees is the form of government that the articles of the Constitution go on to describe. In a republic, the people are not ruled by any person or group of people. Instead, they're ruled by the law. The framework for how the law and the people interact, the Republican form of government, is put forth in similar form in both the US and Virginia Constitutions. In this framework, we divide the decision-making very carefully among different people to ensure our republic doesn't become mere cover for an autocracy. We have a legislature elected by the people through a process spelled out in the Constitution that makes and amends the laws, an executive elected by the people through another process spelled out in the Constitution who enforces the laws and carries out the policies of the government, and finally, we have a judiciary chosen not by election, but by a very different process carefully designed to maintain their accountability to the people, but to keep their focus on what the law demands and not what the people demand. And that's what brings me to the present resolution and the particular elements of it that trouble me. First is the whereas clause wherein council states that it is, quote, "concerned that certain prefiled legislation for the 2020 session of the General Assembly may threaten the rights of law-abiding citizens to keep and bear arms." Now, this is not the same thing as a legislative package that we normally use as the route to send our desires as a city to the General Assembly. This is an official, this is a resolution, this is official proclamation of the city stating that based on nothing more than prefiled legislation that's not even been begun to be debated in committee, that we lack faith in the General Assembly elected pursuant to the constitutional passed laws that are reflective of the will of the people while also respective of their rights, that we lack faith that the governor elected pursuant to the Constitution will carry out the laws in a way that reflects the will of the people and respects the people's rights, and we lack faith that the judiciary chosen through the process outlined in the Constitution will strike down laws that are unconstitutional and will find the correct line between what the government can and cannot do.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
In other words, it sends the message that we lack faith.
Thank you. Whoa, folks, come on now. Respect. Thank you.
Larry McCaulkey, Carrie Nunley, and Russ Oxpey. Is that here? Carrie Nunley.
The year 2019 has brought upon our Commonwealth a cold war of aggression by powers dominated by arrogant rulers whose selfish purpose is to destroy free institutions. They would thereby gladly take from freedom-loving peoples of the Commonwealth the hard-won liberties gained over many centuries. The new year of 2020 calls for the courage of young and old to help win a struggle that indeed has national implications in order to preserve the inalienable rights granted to all by God. These inalienable rights allow us to pursue and protect life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness. We are your surgeon, your barber, your plumber, your carpenter, dentist, mechanic. We are your neighbors. We are gun owners, and we are ubiquitous. Do not mistake our meekness as weakness, for we are all strongly united in the common goal of individual and institutional freedom. We do not desire to be militias, nor do we desire to be malicious. But make no mistake, we shall defend our God-given rights. History is replete with examples of governments gone awry. Russia, 1917, Nazi Germany, 1938, also in 1938, and I hope to God you appreciate the irony of this remark as much as I do, Communist Mao Zedong said, "Political power grows out of the barrel of the gun." Continuing on with Cuba, 1961, Chile, 1973, Iran. Would you like me to continue? Does Virginia belong on this not-so-distinguished list? We are a representative government under the Constitution, not without it. What I wonder do socialists in Richmond intend to do to common sense Americans behind me that would likely have them shot? The only rational answer that I can conclude is that they mean to further undermine us of these inalienable rights. The onslaught of offensive laws we face is gravely concerning, and it starts with the removing of the wings and talons of freedom our Second Amendment writes, as granted to us by God when Jesus instructs us in Luke Chapter 22, verse 33, "If you don't have a sword, sell your cloak and buy one." Times and tools may have changed, yet the principle remains the same. We Virginians do not hold New York values, nor are we Californians. We will not accept these laws to be rammed down our throats then politely asked for seconds. We simply cannot allow ourselves to be disarmed by a government that has not passed our background checks. I ask the council tonight to send a concise message to despotic tyrants everywhere that God-given rights of the people of Virginia Beach shall not be infringed, and that means all of them. Not here, not now, not ever. We will never, we refuse to trade true liberty for false security. Will you stand with us for freedom, or will you collapse under the weight of its responsibilities? I only ask that you please act as our representatives, not our rulers. Thank you for your time, and may God bless you and all of Virginia.
Thank you.
Brandon Wooten, Steve Eli, and Jim Laterno.
Welcome.
Well, thank you. Another namesake, all right. Okay. My fellow Virginians, I submit to you that our inalienable right to bear arms rests on three moral pillars. Some folks will never understand a man's right to go into the wild and obtain an animal to feed him and his family. So is it reasonable for those who are ignorant as to the why we hunt, they be able to dictate the how and what we hunt with? Some folks simply cannot abide by the idea of a good guy with a gun. They would much rather decrease crime by decreasing the amount of crime reports filed, decreasing the amount of criminals they are willing to arrest and hold without bond, decreasing the amount of criminals they are willing to prosecute, decreasing the amount of laws the Attorney General is willing to uphold, otherwise known as criminal justice reform. It's amazing that at the same time, the left seeks to undermine our justice system, they also seek to undermine our inalienable right to self-defense. My fellow Virginians, we all know the motto, "Sixth Emperor Tyrannus." You think in a state with a motto designed to strike fear in the hearts of authoritarians, that no one would try to deny us our inalienable right to stand against governmental oppression, codified in both our federal and our state constitution by the men who actually fought true tyranny? When discussing gun-grabbing schemes, we need to keep in mind the anti-gun groups are leveraging thousands of gun-related homicides in a nation of hundreds of millions. If we really want to decrease mass public shootings, we should be having a conversation about funding mental health solutions, not more prison cells for constitutionally-protected gun owners. The anti-gun groups are conflating three major categories in their attempts to unconstitutionally infringe on law-abiding citizens. One is the mass public shootings. Two is gun homicides and violence. Three are gun accidents and self-harm. Each has a different set of circumstances and a set of solutions, none of which include disarming the population or restricting the constitutional rights of law-abiding citizens. In closing, there are a great number of factors at play in protecting Americans' right to bear arms and doing what is necessary to decrease gun violence and accidents, but Mike Bloomberg buying up candidates here in the great state of Virginia to pave his way for his brand of authoritarianism is not the answer. I encourage the board to vote to pass the resolution before you and send a message to Northern Bloomberg and the rest of those who would take away our inalienable rights, thus always to tyrants.
Thank you.
Steve Ely. Jim Laterno, and Christopher Zimmerman.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight about the Second Amendment status for the city of Virginia Beach. My name is Steve Ely. I'm a retired Air Force Lieutenant Colonel. I've been a resident of the city for over 16 years, and I fully support the Second Amendment. And this is the first time in my 71 years I've ever felt strong enough about something to come forward to address an elected council. The present leadership in Richmond of Northern Fairfax and Herring has chosen to ignore not only the Constitution of Virginia, but the United States Constitution as well. The efforts by these three to force, in their words, "gun safety measures on the citizens of this state" has nothing to do with gun safety, but control of the citizenry. A review of history, as others have pointed out, especially in the past 100 years, clearly shows that all attempts to either control guns or disarm a people at any level has led to increased crime, tyranny, and the murder of untold countless millions of innocent citizens. Ralph Northam is not interested in gun safety. He's interested in disarming law-abiding citizens. Gun safety is a convenient cover for the real intent of Northam. No law the state legislature can pass would ever prevent another such tragedy as that which occurred on May 31st within yards of where we are tonight or the Virginia Tech shooting in '07. Law-abiding gun owners who's interested in guns that are related to self-defense, hunting, and gun collections should not and must not yield to a governor who knows he is violating their God-given constitutional rights. If Northam were serious about gun safety, he would give strong considerations to the proposals of last summer by delegate Glenn Davis regarding steeply increased penalties for crimes involving firearms and improving mental health for those in need of it. Both the Virginia and federal constitutions contain in respect to bills of rights clauses stating that the rights of law-abiding citizens to keep and bear arms. What is so hard to understand? The right of the people shall not be infringed. That to any normal thinking person is common sense. Any law that Richmond passes to restrict gun ownership in any manner is a direct violation of both the Commonwealth and federal constitutions and are therefore unconstitutional. It's time to stand up collectively and individually and send a loud, clear message to Richmond that we will not accept their unconstitutional gun-restricting efforts. Northam and Herring both claim that failure to comply with new laws from Richmond will result in felony charges. By charging someone with a felony, the courts can also revoke that individual's right to vote. Imagine if Northam and Herring tried this and strike the right to vote of thousands, if not hundreds of thousands, from the rolls.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Anyway, thank you for your time tonight.
Jim Laterno. Christopher Zimmerman, and Dana Cottle.
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for coming out here and taking our time. Mr. Mayor, you started off strong. Yes, you took the oath, as all of you guys did. As did the man in blue, myself. I took the oath seven times. And I'm sure there are many people out here that also took that oath to support and defend. Now, we've hit on it many times. One thing nobody's brought up. Federal Code 5, USC 7311 explicitly makes it a federal crime for anyone employed by the government to advocate the overthrow of the U.S. Constitution form of government by violating the oath of office. It provides penalties, which includes removal from office, confinement, and fines. Every one of you guys that took your oath of office, you're bound by that. And if, from what I've heard, some of the members that don't understand or misunderstood the Constitution should probably get learned up on it, because this is pretty important. It's not just the Second Amendment that's at stake here. The First Amendment, the 14th, due process, right to privacy, search and seizures, probable cause, unlawful imprisonment. Governor Northam's already violated his oath of office. In my opinion, the governor's, he should be held accountable for what he's done already by advocating the overthrow of the Constitution. I spent 21 years protecting it. When I retired, I did not relieve myself of my oath. There is no law that could be made that would require me to relinquish my constitutional rights. And your resolution, although it sounds good, it's symbolic. It has no teeth. If Governor Northam's laws pass, and your resolution has nothing in there that says that you were gonna resist, then your resolution is strictly symbolic. It needs to be included. I think somebody else brought up the point that says you should include something about not using any of our resources for those unconstitutional laws. Thank you.
Thank you.
Christopher Zimmerman. Christopher Zimmerman, Dana Cottle, and Kyle Barrett.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you so much for hosting this, and I appreciate your patience through this. And I just wanted to say thank you. And first of all, I can't believe that we're actually here tonight having this discussion about a constitutional right that shouldn't even be in question at all. I find it really ironic that our own state flag says on it clearly, "Sixth Emperor Tyrannus", and here we are fighting tyranny in the state of Virginia and Virginia Beach. But again, I am thankful that you're actually having an open ear tonight. I'm a first-generation American on my father's side. My father's from Tel Aviv, Israel. My aunt married a Holocaust survivor that migrated to Israel and was lucky enough to escape certain deaths by jumping off a train en route to a concentration camp in the early 40s. Based upon what I was told from my family members, one of the first things that Hitler's new government did after taking control over any country was ask that people register guns. And this is what they're trying to do here in Virginia with the new laws. Later, the military came to confiscate family weapons, and then the Jewish or other undesirable families were then forced to leave their homes and most of their belongings behind to go live in high-density ghetto communities. Later, there were food shortages and medical shortages, and medical care became scarce. And just when they thought things couldn't get any worse, they got much worse. Families were rounded up and separated by police and SS troops. They were forced to board trains bound for concentration camps, many of them not realizing that that day would be the last time that they would see each other alive. Ultimately, my uncle learned firsthand that disarmed citizens are very easily oppressed. This is why this issue is so very personal to me. To me, having a weapon for self-defense means that I'm empowered to protect my family, neighbors, and loved ones from ever having to endure a modern-day Holocaust or attack from a criminal. I've lived in Virginia Beach most of my life, and I'm thankful that it's not a dangerous city like Chicago or Baltimore. Both cities have strict gun-control laws, which I find pretty alarming if you think about it. It kind of makes sense. I would like to share with you another true story that happened to myself and my family. Around 2007, it was 4:00 in the morning at my home in Virginia Beach. I heard a man pounding on the door and the windows, demanding that we let him in. I did not recognize the voice or the name and asked him to leave. He would not leave. After pleading with him several times, I was terrified and called 911. Dispatch kept me on the phone and told me to stay calm while I thought I was under an active home invasion. Finally, after 20 minutes, the police got there. It was the longest 20 minutes of my life. We had nothing to defend ourselves except a pitchfork and an antique non-functioning shotgun. And when the police finally arrived, we found out the man was actually a 17-year-old boy that was under the-
Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Is there Christopher Zimmerman here? He didn't respond. Kyle Barrett. Mary Ann Myers. And then Karen Greenhall.
Welcome. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, and my fellow citizens. My name is Kyle Barrett. I live here in Virginia Beach. And I'm in favor of this resolution to support the Second Amendment and the rest of the Constitution. Imagine if I was standing here to defend freedom of speech. If the First Amendment was legislated as much as the Second is, I might need to undergo registration, pay a tax, or get somebody's permission to stand here and speak to you. And if I wanted to speak softly, I would have to get a $200 tax stamp. The Constitution protects us all from that, just like it protects our right to self-defense in the form of the Second Amendment. Proposed legislative changes on the state level will not only impact the rights of every citizen of Virginia Beach, they will deter law-abiding citizens from moving or staying here. I myself will be undergoing a career change in a few months, and I will only stay in Virginia so long as I am able to exercise my God-given rights. I urge you to vote in favor of this resolution to support the Second Amendment and the rest of the U.S. Constitution. I wasn't planning on saying this, but recreational shooting is my passion. And if there's anyone here, any of the council members, you all have my phone number on your voicemail. Or if there's anyone here in the audience who showed up in favor of voting no, I would invite you to come approach me in the back of the council chambers or to give me a phone call. I would love to take any of you shooting. Ammo's on me. I think it would be fun for you to come out and see what our community is about. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Ann Myers. Karen Greenhall. And Mrs. McHenry.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. I'm a citizen and a single mom and a native to Virginia. I'm from this area, and I do not own a gun. But in 1791, the Second Amendment was ratified, and it states, "A well-regulated militia being necessary to security of a free state, the right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed." An infringement, just as a reminder, and for those who may not know in the room, is an encroachment or trespass on a right or privilege. And the legal definition is a trespass or encroachment upon a violation of a law, regulation, contract, or right. Our founding fathers made this amendment short and straight and to the point with no room for altering it. It was written and ratified by our founding fathers because they wanted us to keep our freedom and all of our other freedoms. Our freedom to have guns, our freedom to protect ourselves. And as a single mom, I've had my home broken into, and thank God my daughter and I were not there. And I am looking into getting a gun, because I want that protection. And that really hit home. The Constitution and the Bill of Rights are not to be tampered with or bent or controlled to someone else's wishes or agenda. I know people say our founding fathers did not imagine the rapid-firing weapons of today. During the American Revolution, there were rapid-fire weapons that were faster than the muzzle-loading flintlock rifles that could charge maybe three shots per minute. Repeating arms predated any of the founding of any English colony in America. In 1481, Leonardo da Vinci designed a rapid-fire weapon. Around 1490 to 1530, a German breech-loaded Matlock Archibis had a 10-shot revolving cylinder. In 1718, a man named James Puckel invented and even patented a machine gun named Defense, which held 11 charges and could fire 63 rounds in seven minutes. In 1777, the Ferguson rifle, invented by Patrick Ferguson, was a flintlock that could fire up to seven rounds per minute. Then there was the Giorandoni air rifle, which was invented by Bartholomew Giorandoni around 1779. Its range was 125 to 150 yards with a high rate of fire. And at that time, it had a 19-round detachable magazine, them trying to limit what weapons we have are throwing us back to well before the Revolutionary War. These rapid-fire arms were expensive and available to anyone who could afford these arms.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it. Thank you.
Karen Greenhall. Mrs. McHenry. And William Swingle.
Welcome.
My name is Karen Starling Greenhall, and I live and work right here in Virginia Beach. And I just thank you for the privilege to speak. Your resolution, which I really like, it opens with the statement, "The Second Amendment of the United States Constitution guarantees that the right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed." So this is based on four facts. The first is that the right to keep and bear arms is an inalienable right given to us by God as stated in our founding document, the Declaration of Independence. And second, the Constitution does not give people the right to bear arms. The Second Amendment is in the Constitution to protect the inalienable right from being taken by the government. And the fourth fact is that neither the state or the federal government has the authority to take away the right to keep and bear arms. So these four facts go to the foundational principles that our country was built upon. Our founding fathers so feared the federal government that the federal government would one day exceed its authority, that they put in the Bill of Rights just to keep this from happening. The government did not give individuals the right to bear arms, and they do not have the right to take it away. And our government was created to protect our God-given rights, not to take them away. And I can't believe that that's what we're talking about in Virginia Beach. I'm sorry. I didn't have that written. The resolution is not addressing a partisan issue. It's an American issue. This resolution is requiring no action by the city. It is very simply taking a stand to support our Second Amendment rights. So I would like to ask each of you as individuals two questions. One, I'm asking each one of you to prove that you understand these fundamental values and facts about America by voting yes. And I'm asking each one of you to voice your support for our Second Amendment rights by voting yes. This resolution is about America and Virginia and Virginia Beach and every citizen that you are supposed to be representing. And I don't care what party you identify with, but you're all Americans. You should stand with the rest of us to support and defend the American privilege of individual liberty that is enshrined in our state and federal constitutions. If you vote no, you are choosing to place yourself in an adversarial position with people that are like me. And we're just law-abiding citizens who love America, and we appreciate both of the constitutions that we live under. both of the constitutions that we live under, and we're proud to be Virginians. And I'm asking you to vote yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Mrs. McHenry, William Swingle, and then Alan Fitzgerald. Sorry, I didn't know how to pronounce your first name.
Welcome.
Thank you. My first name is Lily McHenry. I'm a student at First Colonial High School. My father works as a fireman at Station Number Two. My mom worked for a long time as a veterinarian for the K-9 force from the police department. I want to thank you guys very much for having us here tonight. It really is a huge honor. I've never spoken in front of a crowd before, so you're going to have to forgive me. But honorable city council members, today, a great many of our constituents have gathered here today to implore you to uphold the Constitution and defend our Second Amendment rights. And many of your constituents have argued against the possibility of a Second Amendment sanctuary as well. There have been arguments ranging from school shootings to the unfortunate accident that happened right here in the municipal center last year, as well as personal property rights. I ask you to consider those who don't have the power to otherwise defend themselves against violent criminals. Unfortunately, three years ago, I spent the greater portion of multiple days just several buildings away fighting to keep a dangerous man who had hurt me from hurting anyone else. Unfortunately, this is this is an experience shared not only by many women, but also by many men, especially in cities like Baltimore, New Orleans, and Chicago, that also enforce non or unconstitutional gun laws, similar to the ones that our state is about to enforce. Violent criminals have and always will find a way to get their hands on banned firearms and putting our citizens in a position where they are unable to defend themselves and retaliate against those with malicious intent, which sets a dangerous precedent, not only for our city's future, but that of our nation. I applaud our local law enforcement, who work tirelessly to prevent crime and defend our citizens so we may hopefully never have to draw our arms in a moment of imminent danger. But Virginia Beach is massive, not only in population, but in square mileage as well, with a fourth-largest city by square mileage in the nation. And try as they might, law enforcement cannot be there in mere seconds than it might take for a violent criminal to impose their will. I ask you to consider your daughters, your sons, your mothers, your fathers, your sisters and brothers when it comes to this. Violent criminals will stop at nothing, especially when your citizens are disarmed. Virginia Beach has always been a shining light for representing the very best of our state, from our students to our service members to our beaches and town center. By defending our Constitution, we defend ourselves and our great city as well. Thank you so much for having me here tonight, and hope you guys have a wonderful evening.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
William Swingle, William Swingle, Alan Fitzgerald, and John Paris.
Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members. Thank you for allowing time for me to speak on this issue tonight. My name is William Mark Swingle, and I'm a lifelong resident of the great city of Virginia Beach. During my time here, this city has been regularly touted as one of the safest places in the country to live and work and raise a family. This is a result of strong city leadership, excellent public safety personnel and resources, and quite frankly, our community. As we all know, this city experienced a terrible tragedy this past year, as we join the growing list of places across this country to experience the gun violence, loss of friends and neighbors, and disruption of a community associated with a mass shooting. I first thought of describing it as an unthinkable tragedy, but that really is not the case anymore in this country. Unfortunately, there were many such tragedies before Virginia Beach. There have been multiple events since Virginia Beach, and in fact, it is not an uncommon occurrence in this country today. With that as a backdrop, I am concerned about the proposed action that we are here to talk about tonight. The overwhelming majority of citizens in this country, in Virginia, and I suspect in this city, support common-sense gun reform legislation. So how will tonight's proposed action affect the reality, and I believe equally important, the perception of our city? Is the intent to indicate that we are not concerned about and do not support common-sense gun legislation? Is the intent to indicate that we are not concerned about the incredible numbers and proliferation of firearms in our country? Is the intent to indicate that we are not concerned that military-style assault weapons and other weapons designed for mass killings are present in our neighborhoods and our community? I'm asking these questions because I believe that is how our great city may be perceived if you follow through with this unnecessary and controversial action to support the special interests of some. As I mentioned before, the majority of Americans support common-sense gun legislation. Whether reality or perception, if you follow through this action, this city will be looked upon less favorably by many people as a place to live and work and raise a family. Thanks for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Alan Fitzgerald, John Paris, and Scott Stanley.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council members, fellow Virginians. My name is Alan Fitzgerald. I am currently in the process of moving both my residence and my business to Virginia Beach. I'm a disabled Coast Guard combat veteran, having served on both the water and ground in Iraq. I'm a concealed carry permittee, federal firearms licensee, and a self-employed gunsmith. I attended the December 3 meeting here for the initial sanctuary proposal, and is why I'm speaking here tonight. I want to thank the city council collectively for listening to your constituents and your effort in considering this drafting this resolution. The statement of impact when this resolution is passed will speak loudly and in concert with the overwhelming majority of counties, cities, and towns in the Old Dominion. I, like many here tonight, are humble, average, hard-working citizens. Some of us choose to own, train with, and carry firearms as a means of protection from an unpredictable criminal element. The Supreme Court in Warren versus D.C. even states that the police do not have a duty to protect citizens. So how else can we protect and defend ourselves, our loved ones, friends, and if needed, coworkers? If others choose to not exercise their right, I respect your decision to do so, but do not infringe on my or anyone else's rights based on emotional response vice rational and critical thought. Many of us in Virginia take stock in exercising our God-granted right enumerated in the Constitution that defends this great nation from future tyrannical governments, such as we bear witness being birthed in our state legislature. Law-abiding citizens here tonight and citizens across the state of Virginia who have already stood up and said no to Richmond stand to be stripped of their rights, not privileges, but their rights, and then their freedoms, by being criminalized for simply owning one or more firearms. This resolution sends a clear message to Richmond on behalf of Virginia Beach citizens and state citizens alike that that you, the city council, support the entire United States and Virginia State constitutions and the rights we already have. If we do not stand together as citizens, elected servants, and law enforcement, connecting the written line, the thin blue line, and the line in the sand, we all stand to lose our God-given rights, one by one. This is no longer about stopping crime or gun safety. Start by protecting our freedom and right to defend ourselves from tyranny. Vote to pass this resolution. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
John Paris, John Paris, Scott Stanley, and Jacqueline Campbell.
Welcome, sir.
Evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of the city council. I want to thank you for having this forum for us to make our voice heard. Clearly, it's not being heard in Richmond right now. Ben Franklin once said that those who would give up essential liberty to purchase a little temporary safety deserve neither liberty nor safety. Now, this was used not in the context of what we're talking about now, but what we're talking about is not giving up liberty to get safety. We're talking about the government taking liberty and in turn, not providing safety. We can all reasonably agree to reasonable measures that will increase safety and do not infringe on rights. The sanctuary city proposal gives voice to the members of our city and our discontent. And although it will not override state law, what we have seen statewide in terms of similar cities and counties taking this measure should be sending a strong signal to Richmond, yet it does not appear that they are paying attention to that either. It seems as though the government in Richmond, in my opinion, have been purchased by out-of-state influence. For example, Mike Bloomberg has bragged about how the money that he has spent through his lobbying groups directly affected the elections here in Virginia. And it's not unreasonable to assume that there are other out-of-state actors who are trying to force the same issue here. Information I could find indicates that the anti-gun lobbies spent over $2.5 million in their efforts. The NRA, on the other hand, $300,000. Kind of tough to compete against that sort of money. But what's happening in Richmond right now does not reflect the votership in Virginia. I think the number of places that are signing up as sanctuaries makes a pretty clear signal that the voters here in Virginia do not want what is being proposed. What you're seeing is the voice of the money coming from other interests. It is clearly an anti-gun measure. If you consider how much attention has been paid to the AR-15, the boogeyman of guns, as compared to how much time and effort has been spent trying to make schools and municipal buildings safer, it's pretty clear what they are chasing. Yet, if you look at the statistics, there is absolutely no correlation between crime and use of AR-15s. Chicago had over 2,700
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Scott Stanley, Jacqueline Campbell, and Ella Dunbar.
Welcome, sir.
Welcome, council. This is mind-numbing, maybe as much for you as it is for me to hear everyone speak here. I'm a gun owner on several guns. I'm a veteran. I love the feel of a gun. I love to shoot the gun, but I feel this resolution is nonsense. I've lived across the United States in the military. Every place I've gone, I have had no problem getting a gun. And I believe the vast majority, 99% of those people, have had no problem either. And it's that 1% which which will cause a problem. People bring up the Second Shot in the church there in Texas, and nobody talks about the mentally disturbed individual who have been committed who had the gun. And tell that to those two people that died there if that person had not had that gun for those shootings. You know, I love America. I love being able to carry a gun, and no one's talking about this. These are proposed, proposed. We know what happens to bills that are proposed in the legislature there. They get whittled down to more common-sense legislation. And I feel it's time for some common-sense legislation, and I love Virginia Beach, so I've lived here for 25 years. But for your council to pass this just leaves me a little bit embarrassed. And when I talk to people, it makes me a little embarrassed to be from Virginia Beach. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jacqueline Campbell, Ella Dunbar, and Tommy Serja.
Hi, thank you for seeing all of us today. I would like to ask all of you, what is the motivation behind the proposed gun control measures? If the goal is to get guns off the streets, then gun control fails. We have seen with drugs and human trafficking that black markets keep finding ways to break the laws. Making new laws won't stop them. Going after the criminals and issuing stricter punishments for those caught are the only way to combat that. If the goal is to reduce suicides, gun control fails. Severely depressed and suicidal people need community support and mental health help. People who want to kill themselves can do so while unarmed and in police custody, apparently. The only thing that stops suicide is their wanting to live. If you want fewer gun-related accidents, gun control fails. Accidents happen because of poor storage practices, untrained participants, and lack of practice. More children and teens die from drownings, chokeings, poisoning ingestion, and suffocating every year than are even injured from firearm accidents. If it is a discouraged armed robbery, gun control fails. Hundreds of security camera footage online show that a robber being met with armed citizens exercising self-defense is the only thing that stops the crime from happening. If the goal is to stop rape and violent crime, again, gun control fails. Restraining orders are useless. Police can't get there in time. Only arming the victims stops the violence. If you want to stop mass shootings, gun control fails. Mass shooters are criminals with mental health problems. Many have prior criminal histories and had prior warnings from parents, teachers, neighbors that were ignored by law enforcement and mental health officials. Countless studies have proven that in every area where law-abiding citizens can defend themselves with lethal force, crime vanishes. So either these attempts to force gun control laws is a delusional, misdirected ignorance, or it is a deliberate attempt to remove constitutional rights from law-abiding citizens and turn everyone into criminals or victims. A government that does not trust its honest, law-abiding, tax-paying citizens with the means of self-defense is not itself worthy of trust. Jeffrey R. Snyder. Making good people helpless won't make bad people harmless. Freedom of speech and the right to bear arms are the foundations on which the entire rest of the U.S. Constitution and Bill of Rights were built. I assure you, each new generation of patriots will continue to fight
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
For these rights, our ancestors died to protect. Thank you.
Ella Dunbar, Tommy Serja, and Joanna Banka.
Welcome.
Good evening. We have an arms race within the borders of the United States of America. Where does it end? There's a very vocal group spinning out of control, shouting that the government is trying to take their guns away. For the last 25 years, there's been an especially loud cry going up, and no one disputes the fact that there's a constitutional right to bear arms to protect your family, your home, your property. Yet, we have to listen to people radicalizing their own echo chamber, saying that they're coming to get their guns. This has been the excuse used to justify resistance to come since gun laws, that anything goes with what can be available in our community. We're talking about weapons that are intended to kill humans in mass quantities. How can this be okay? I'm not going to get into the weeds about what constitution assaults an assault weapon. I can understand city council addressing the concerns of citizens and providing a forum to hear from everyone, but if you take action to make this declaration an affirmative thing in the city of Virginia Beach, then you are doing a disservice to the voters who turned out all over the state of Virginia to say that a change is needed. You'd also be dishonoring the employees who died here. So many people know someone or have connections to someone who died here. I went to school with the sister of one of the victims. I have family members who attend the church where Mr. Cox was a member. His father doesn't want a son who was a hero. He wants his son. His son was killed by someone who had extended-capacity magazines and was pretty effective for too long in a standoff with police officers. We struggle to equip our police officers and first responders with what is necessary for them to do their jobs, yet they arrive to the scene outmatched in equipment and outgunned. They signed up to serve and protect and understand that they may be called upon to make the ultimate sacrifice. They should not be compelled to just needlessly give their lives away. Access to assault weapons for everyone makes these weapons available to anyone. Might does not make right. We have a society of ever-escalating bigger guns. The gunmakers are ecstatic. We used to be concerned about foreign attacks. Now, we have to think twice about going to Walmart, to the movies, even to church. Am I to believe that this is just the cost of doing business in the United States of America and here in Virginia Beach? We just had an election. Majority of people want change. If you vote to make Virginia Beach a sanctuary city, what are you telling the voters? I voted to put some of you in office. I can vote to take you out, and I will not have to fire a shot. What I want, what I hear in this room is a lot of fear. I think fear is what is driving this conversation. Maybe it's time to get to know your neighbors. If you know your neighbors and maybe get involved in your community, maybe you can make a difference. Thank you.
Tommy Serja, Joanna Banka. Tommy Serge, Joanna Banka, and David Harris.
Good evening.
Welcome.
Hi, Tommy. I come speaking this evening in great concern about the proposed resolution to make Virginia Beach a Second Amendment constitutional city. I also come to hopefully dispel a few myths. In the beginning of May of 2019, following something in the water, our city was together historically like never before. We were still riding a wave in which we were all united and felt a magic that was such a unique but comforting feeling. It was almost as if trivial things like race, age, and political affiliation no longer mattered. It was simply Virginia Beach as one. Then tragedy struck, and it gutted us. But now, we have a choice on how to respond. We can come together and heal as one, or we can resort back to immoral political tactics by doubling down on guns and an irresponsible overcommitment to the Second Amendment by way of, in the most literal sense, a completely meaningless resolution. I find any city representative in support of this legislation to be setting a bad precedent in an attempt to overstep their powers. City officials were elected to make decisions about local policy and not to interfere with state politics. And quite frankly, regardless of the success or failure of this resolution, it's only statements of principle and has no legal effect, and it makes you look like a figurehead instead of an acting political body. When will Virginia Beach become a First Amendment city? Or because we're possibly facing a war, are we going to become a Third Amendment city? At what point do resolutions like this one become redundant since you already made an oath to the Constitution? Many who have a concerning amount of love for the Second Amendment cite the importance of guns in reference to self-defense and for the use of protection, yet another myth that needs to be dispelled. A study of gun use and self-defense conducted by the Harvard University School of Public Health made key summary findings. One, a majority of self-reported self-defense gun uses are deemed to be illegal when reviewed by criminal court judges. Two, few criminals that are shot are shot by law-abiding citizens. Three, victims using a gun were no less likely to be injured after taking protective action, and there was little evidence to suggest that self-defense gun use is uniquely beneficial in reducing the likelihood of injury or property loss. The journal article closed with, and I quote, "This article helps provide accurate information concerning self-defense gun use. It shows that many of the claims about the benefits of gun ownership are largely myths." You have an important principle in front of you, one I think ought to be rejected because respectfully, it's simply not your job, and largely, the reasons most use to support it are based on false claims. Note how the resolution and its supporters omitted well-regulated militia. Unless given a badge or a uniform, I don't see a well-regulated militia behind me. Why are we doubling down on what is almost strictly party politics, when not to mention it's party politics you were not elected to engage in? I am disappointed, but you're not discouraged. While this resolution is in poor taste, it is in your hands to fix. If anything, I think you need to support a resolution upheld your oath in supporting the democratically-elected State General Assembly. If anyone disagrees with the politicians, organize, get people registered to vote, and win elections, not support powerless resolutions. Even the founders, well-regulated militia, understood both the simplicity and importance of common sense. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joanna Banka, David Harris, and Douglas Peterson.
Welcome.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to come and voice my support...
It's a little closer to the...
Thank you for the opportunity tonight to come and voice my support for our Second Amendment rights. My name is Joanna Banka, and I am a resident of Ocean Lakes. And I don't have a speech prepared, but I'm going to just speak from my heart and experience. In 2013, there was a rash of thirteen robberies in my neighborhood in a ten-day period of time. My house was one of those homes that were robbed. It was an afternoon. I went out at 11:00 a.m. to do some birthday shopping for my daughter. I was out for two hours. I came home, I put my key in the door, and the moment the door opened, I knew something was a mess. My dog was in shock and shaking. Things were awry in my house. I stepped in to find my house being burglarized by four men. I walked into that situation defenseless. They escaped, but were eventually apprehended. But this was thirteen homes that were broken into in a short period of time. I hate to think what would have happened if it would have been one of my grandchildren coming in after school, which they normally do, but it was me. And two days before that, these same men had been in my house while I was in the shower. I came out of the shower with a towel and shampoo in my hair as they went running down the stairs out of my house. As a mother, as a grandmother, as a woman, as a senior citizen, I don't ever want to find myself in that situation again, ever, defenseless. As I go to bed at night as a single person, I don't want to feel fear that somebody's going to come into my home and I have no way to protect myself. These people tased my dog. They were crazy. They were armed. What do you do in this situation? That's when I decided it was time to get a gun. And I passed the rigorous background check, as all law-abiding citizens that are gun owners do. And I hope you will keep that in mind, and I ask you to support this amendment. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
David Harris, Douglas Peterson, and Gary Mueller.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you very much, mayor and council. I'll keep it short. Everybody else knows. Everybody knows the Constitution, left and right, in and out, everything else. I'll just keep it like this. I was a police officer in New York for twenty years, retired in 2004, came down here because it was a nice place to live, very nice place to live. And now, I'm kind of concerned because I keep hearing talk about taking guns, having it being a felony to keep a certain amount of rounds in your gun, in your magazine, and stuff like that. Personally, I can't see becoming a felon protecting myself from a felon. Doesn't make any sense, not to me. So, but the bottom line is, when we worked together as police officers, we used to say to each other, "Do the right thing." And all I'm going to ask you guys to do is do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your service.
Douglas Peterson, Gary Mueller, and John Velazquez.
You're welcome, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor, city council. My name is Doug Peterson. I live in Newport News. I've lived there now for forty-six years, and three generations of my family are living there, earning, making livings in productive careers and good jobs. I am a gun owner. My son is a gun owner, and my grandson is a gun owner. We take that responsibility quite seriously, but we also take the reasons we have it quite seriously, and that is for self-defense and protection. Much has been said here tonight on points that are already made, so I won't repeat that, but the federal Constitution has been stated, quoted, reiterated a number of times here tonight, as well as the Virginia Constitution. The Second Amendment has been more than aptly stated, and various people have talked about it, but keep in mind that the Second Amendment was put there as part of the Bill of Rights in a session of Congress that was held some number of years after the Constitution was ratified to clear up some discrepancies that they felt needed to be enumerated. And while they said they restricted the federal government's rights to control firearms, the colonies and states had them, had them for years. And while they didn't prohibit, they required. They required their people to have certain amounts of firearms in their homes, but a certain quantity of ammunition, ready for instant call as militia, because that was the name of the game. Those were already pre-existing militias before the Constitution was ever even drafted, because that's how they protected themselves. And frequently, they would call on England to send in regular troops when they got overwhelmed. Somebody made the statement earlier that those who would give up essential liberty for a little safety deserve neither. That's true. Benjamin Franklin wrote that when he was a member of the Pennsylvania General Assembly, because they were trying to figure out a way to tax the richest states in the state so they could support the militias in the western side of the state against Indian attacks. And the state owners didn't want to pay the tax. So that was kind of where that came from. The money has to come from somewhere, and it's going to come from the people. But the people are willing to spend their time and effort becoming militiamen so they could go and fight for the safety of their fellow citizens. There's been a number of these states that have put together similar resolutions to what Virginia has, and currently, Virginia has the most of any of them. But it makes me think of New York. Back in 2013, they passed this so-called SAFE Act, which is still very vehemently opposed. And in the seven years it's been in effect, what's happened to it? They just don't enforce it. None of the localities do. They don't check for guns that aren't registered. They don't go check for people that, you know, have the wrong kind of firearm. They don't count rounds in the magazine, but probably nobody carries more than seven for obvious reasons. But that's what happened to it over time. It just didn't bother them. So I think what we're going to see is maybe the same thing's going to happen here. It's just not going to get fixed.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it.
Gary Mueller, John Velazquez, and Sergio Lopez.
Welcome.
Good evening. Several of you have seen me before, so I won't go into my background. With the three minutes, I've just got a few things to say here. First of all, I want to thank you for a very balanced resolution. I know that you probably fought tooth and nail to get this thing hammered out. I know it took a lot of work, and I think it's a very good first step, and I do mean that, first step. There's more that can be done, but great for a first step. I remind you that the Second Amendment protects all the other amendments. We couldn't be standing here having this conversation without the Second Amendment protecting our right to do the First Amendment. I also remind you that a good guy with a gun has saved lives many a time. All we need is an example from that last shooting down in Texas that's already been mentioned a couple of times. I urge you to please help us stop the bought-and-paid-for governor and the other radicals in Richmond from passing unconstitutional laws. And there's a bunch of them. Just about every one of the prefiled laws that the governor put in, it's the same garbage that he put in on the prior legislative packages from nineteen that got shot down in committee. It's the same stuff all over again. And just because you've got a Democratic majority, he's trying to get them through one more time. And we're trying to stop it because they are unconstitutional. A couple of comments about some of the things that were said up here earlier. They said, talking about people on the other side not coming up here and talking tonight. I feel that if the other side thought it was important enough to fight this, that they would have been here, just like I gave up, and a whole bunch of other people gave up other things to be here tonight, to speak our piece, to try to convince you to get this resolution through. So please, take that into consideration. A couple of people mentioned common sense gun laws, and I'm fed up to hear hearing that phrase. Common sense gun laws is the new phrase that's been used in place of gun control laws. Probably twenty years ago, gun control laws got kind of switched over to common sense gun laws. It's the new catchphrase for gun control laws. And one other thing I wanted to remind you of, I think the count right now is one hundred and seventeen counties or other municipalities in the state of Virginia have passed Second Amendment...
Thank you very much, sir.
Second Amendment resolutions.
Really appreciate it. Thank you.
John Velazquez, Sergio Lopez, and John Abernathy.
Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for hearing us out. In Federalist Fifty-One, James Madison wrote that "It is of great importance in republic not only to guard the society against the oppression of its rulers, but to guard one part of the society against the injustice of the other part. If a majority be united by a common interest, the rights of the minority will be insecure." He also wrote, "Justice is the end of government. In a society under the forms of which a stronger faction can readily unite and oppress a weaker, anarchy may as truly be said to reign as in a state of nature, where the weaker individual is not secured against the violence of the stronger." Hence, the Second Amendment. You never need a gun until you need one badly. The Left says, "Trust us. Have confidence in us. All we want are a few common sense safety gun measures." But Thomas Jefferson wrote in the Kentucky Resolutions of 1798 in paragraph nine about the creeping power of government, "Let no more be heard of the confidence in man, but bind him down from mischief by the chains of the Constitution." The reasons we have a Constitution are so that the rights of the minority will be protected from the passions of the majority, and that the government has clear lines it is not allowed to cross, the rule of law. I have no desire to debate the logic of the proposed anti-gun legislation, but I do offer this food for thought. The incoming legislators find themselves at a fork in the road. Are they going to follow the founders of our republic, such as Jefferson, Franklin, and Adams, who formed a limited government of which purpose is to secure and protect our liberty and freedom? Or are they going to follow the path of communist dictators and despots such as Lenin, Mao, and Castro, who disarmed their people and ruled them with an iron fist and brutally suppressed their basic liberties and freedoms? The Left often waxes eloquent about the rule of law and that no one is above the law, but lately, the Left seemed to either set aside the law for their own purposes or threaten to ruthlessly and violently enforce it by threatening to activate the Virginia National Guard. SB sixteen would violate the Second Amendment to the U.S. Constitution and Article One, Section thirteen of the Virginia Constitution. The right of the people to keep and bear arms shall not be infringed. Article One, Section ten of the U.S. Constitution expressly prohibits states from passing ex-post facto laws as in making previously legal guns illegal, thus criminalizing their owners. HB four zero zero three creates a conditions whereby firearms can be confiscated without their owners being convicted of a crime in violation of the Fifth Amendment protection of due process of law. Virginia would be disarmed by the same kinds of politicians who allow MS-13 gang members to remain in the U.S. illegally so they can rape our daughters and hack them to pieces in the streets and allow Antifa thugs to riot, destroy property, and violently assault anybody who disagrees with them. Yes, law-abiding Virginians would be turned into instant felons and vigorously prosecuted, while the true lawbreakers remain free. To boil an elephant down to a pork chop, the Virginia Legislature does not have the authority to ignore the U.S. and Virginia constitutions by banning and confiscating guns or to create a grandfather law or an after red flag laws. Please vote to support the Second Amendment.
Thank you.
Sergio Lopez, John Abernathy, and Christine Lille.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. I'm a father. I'm a patriot, and I'm a retired Navy SEAL. I served over twenty years, serving our country. I've been deployed over twenty-five countries. I saw combat in Iraq and Afghanistan. I cannot believe that I'm here talking about our Constitution being violated right now. Both the Second Amendment of the U.S. Constitution and the Constitution of Virginia pretty much say the same thing, that our rights and law are being infringed. From VB.gov, Virginia Beach City estimated has about a population of four hundred and forty-nine thousand nine hundred sixty-two citizens in Virginia. We have about eight hundred and forty police officers, according to the same website. That's five hundred and thirty people for every police officer. I love my police brothers. We started together in combat and war. There's no way that they can possibly protect against criminals that want to harm us, be that many outnumbered. The governor's requesting seven point five million dollars to enforce gun ban on universal background checks, one-gun-per-month limitation, red flag gun confiscation, orders more. Do you support the appropriation of money, even though none of these provisions are currently in law in Virginia? Given that none of the gun control restrictions are currently in law in Virginia, would you support a budget amendment preventing the governor from using any funds to implement these anti-right restrictions via executive order? And would you support or oppose a budget amendment prohibiting the governor from using the National Guard or police any confiscation or registration of firearms pursuant to legislation passed by the General Assembly? Why now are we talking about this? This is why now? What is the underlying reason for this discussion here? It's not to protect Americans, and like someone else quoted, evil exists in the world. And the only thing necessary to triumph is government to do nothing, Edwin Burke. This is not about safety, but this is about control. I took an oath to my office, just as everyone else here is taking the same oath. So I'm asking everyone here respectfully to do your job and protect the Constitution of America. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
John Abernathy, Christine Lille, and Dom Rosso.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for being patient and listening to us all. Really do appreciate it.
Really do appreciate it. Your undivided attention's been much appreciated. You've really only got one decision here to make tonight. Are you gonna go with the majority of the people, or are you gonna go with the Bloomberg and Northam faction? The people don't want you to usurp our constitutional rights, our gun laws. And I liked what the other man said there. There's no such thing as, and I'm sick and tired of hearing the phrase, gun safety or gun control, sensible gun control. The only gun control is the man behind the trigger who's aiming at what he wants to shoot at. And if that man isn't stable, he shouldn't be having a gun. Let's go look at the medical, let's go look at the mental part. I was at a board meeting, I've been to like seven of these things now in the last thirty days. I was at the financial meeting last, a couple nights ago in Suffolk, and there was a hundred and six, a hundred and seven speakers, and yes, I spoke. About forty of them were teachers that needed money, mental health facilities that needed money, riverways that needed to be cleaned up, oyster beds that needed to be cleaned up, our polluted rivers, the Elizabeth with the Creosote plant that used to be there, and it went on and on and on. And I get up and I'm looking at these people saying, where's the question here? Are we gonna spend seven and a half million dollars to take guns away from me and law-abiding citizens and taxpayers? Or can we take that seven and a half million dollars and give it to these people and clean up our riverways and help the mental cases and the mental hospitals and the teachers and what they need? It's a no-brainer. If you can't do your job as we have voted you in to do, clear your desk out tonight. Don't show up tomorrow. Really, I'm not being rude. Clear your desk out because we're asking you to do the right thing. Protect our Second Amendment rights. That's all, period. Because if our second falls, the rest is sure to go with it. Then there's House Bill three thirteen, I think, coming up. You can't have bullets in your car on school grounds. All these little penny-ante laws that the Democrats are throwing in there, it's just crazy. We got to put a stop to it. And we're asking you to go to Richmond with us and put a stop to it with Northam and the Bloombergs and everybody else up there that's trying to literally screw up this state, and it's gonna make a big wave all the way across the country. Please, do your job. Please, listen to us. Help us. Go to Richmond with us. Speakers, one voice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Christine Lille, Dom Russo, and then Gary Hubbard.
Mayor Dyer, council members, thank you very much for letting us speak on this subject tonight. Definition of a sanctuary is a place of refuge or safety. I assumed when I woke up this morning and every morning for the past fifty-seven years that I was living in the United States, and that was a place of refuge and safety. This resolution or this bill that Newsom is putting, I'm not as public speaking, you gotta excuse me, but that he's putting forth is taking away our ability to protect ourselves, to be safe and to feel safe in our homes, in our cars, in our schools, in our churches. I just implore you to vote yes to this resolution. I think you would be doing a huge disservice to Virginia Beach residents by not supporting this resolution. I've lived in many cities across the United States. I watch the news, I know what's going on in the world. And you start taking away the gun laws or gun rights, and you start changing the gun laws, we're gonna end up just like Chicago or any of the other Democrat-run cities, which I know Virginia is, you know, heavy on the Democrats right now, but we're gonna vote them out come the next election. I think that you, I think you really honestly would be doing a huge disservice to Virginia Beach. People can protect themselves. We don't need the government stepping in and telling us what we can carry, when we can carry it. And yeah, that's all I have to say. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dom Russo, Gary Hubbard, and Patrick O'Toole.
Welcome.
So, being a family man now, my family and I both thank God every single day for our ability to live in this country. Our God-given rights and the strong leaders that have gone before us have set a foundation of amazing grace and freedom. I've spent my entire career in Virginia Beach, mostly as an active-duty Navy SEAL. I've dedicated my life to studying, researching, and implementing principles to protect life and freedom. I truly care about every life, and I've had the opportunity to work with thousands of good citizens who truly want to do the right thing. Everyone that questions and opposes the Second Amendment are uneducated and ignorant on what it takes to protect life and freedom. It's a slap in the face that we even have to debate our inalienable rights, but here we are again. It's time to get real and reflect deeply on what you really stand for. Is Virginia Beach or anywhere else in this country really willing to impose and enforce laws and legislation that we all know will tear down good and upright-standing citizens? To turn good men and women into targets by our government overnight? Laws and legislation that would give criminals and evil people the upper hand in a life-or-death scenario? I'm waving a red flag on our politicians right now. We are talking about an inalienable right, our right to self-protection for ourselves, our families, and enemies foreign and domestic. Anything that takes good people and turns them into villains overnight should be and will be seriously and forcefully opposed. You guys are our leaders, and we need good leaders. May God bless and guide you in your leadership. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gary Hubbard, Patrick O'Toole, and Charlie Wilson.
How you doing, gentlemen? Most of you know me. How you doing, John?
Going well.
Louis, Sabrina. First, I'd like to commend you for your stick-to-it-ness, I'm telling you, without taking a break. But we all know that the Constitution of the United States is the supreme law of the land. As such, the Second Amendment clearly states that it is our right to bear arms and protect ourself and our property as we see fit. That doesn't mean you can shoot your neighbor. That doesn't mean you can take out your weapon to fire it off on Fourth of July. What it means is sensible gun ownership. Now, I support the Second Amendment, but I also support all the amendments. There's no catch-all amendment that says we can make this right. I thank everybody that came up here and make a statement, but I believe we're actually talking to the wrong body. The General Assembly is the one that will enact legislation and make laws that we will have to adhere to, whether we want to or not. That the vigorous prosecution of these laws will be up to the citizens of Virginia Beach and their police. Most of you know that the police are after the fact. If you're being robbed, they respond after the fact. If there's a bank robbery, they respond after the fact. The key word here is "after the fact." That means you must defend yourself, and thankfully, most of us will never be in a life-or-death situation. My heart goes out there to the people that lost their lives. But I would commend you to think about, I believe it was line fourteen and fifteen, to the greatest degree possible. That word "possible" is a very powerful word. If they enact the legislation, they pass the law for gun reform, that means there's your possible. Also, concerned about prefiled legislation. We have no idea what the legislation will or will not be. But I would beseech each and every one of you here to go to Richmond, get ahold of your representatives. If you do not like the legislation, say so. Don't sit here like a lump on a log and not do anything. And thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Patrick O'Toole, Charlie Wilson, and Larry Crane.
Welcome, sir.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council members. I'm here on behalf of my son, Zachariah Harley Wilson. He didn't make it to the New Year. I'll crosshair this for you real quick. You can either support this amendment and save lives or support Richmond, and the blood stain will be on your hands. Thank you.
Patrick O'Toole here. Larry Crane, Dr. Al Brewster, and Warren Murphy.
Welcome, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. If there's anything new that I could add to what everybody else has said here this evening, we've had a lot of facts and figures, and certainly you know how compassionate and or passionate everybody is about their Second Amendment rights. I can tell you what it means to me, so that's what I'm gonna talk about right now, is that everybody in this room, all the men and women here, we have all those other wonderful rights because what happened? Because somebody waved some paper in the air and said, "Hey, I'm gonna write this, and you're gonna get these rights?" No, we have to go back before that. We have to go to men and women that picked up a firearm and met the British on the battlefield, right? Those are the people that got us our rights. So, guns play an important part in our lives. They gave us all the rights that we have right now. Without them, we probably wouldn't have any of these. That's one of the things that people were saying here today. So, they're important to us. One more point. On a personal note, I have a family member that worked over in building number two. By the grace of God, she had that day off. She worked on the second floor. She knew everybody on the second floor that lost their lives that day. She knew them. The person that committed those acts, I asked her a hundred times, was there something where this guy showed that he was gonna do something like this? Her answers remained the same, not one thing. There wasn't anything he showed that he was done. And there isn't any law, when you look at these laws, that would have changed. That would have changed what's going, what happened that day over there in that tragedy back in May. So, passing laws, we already have a whole stacks of those all over the country, right? And it's already against the law to take a gun and shoot somebody. We all know that in this room. But that doesn't stop people like that. It never will. All right? So, it is good men that have to have a gun that face those bad men that make the difference. So, don't limit those men. Allow them to do the jobs if they have to. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Dr. Al Brewster, Warren Murphy, and Charles Somon.
Welcome.
Thank you, Semper Fi, Mr. Mayor, city council. I appreciate you taking the time to listen to all these good people tonight. I can't really add any more statistics or facts, anything else to what people have said. I'm sure you've heard it all by now. All I can do is encourage you as a mental health professional, encourage you to support, to hear the concern, to hear the stress that people are under, and be their champions, support them, and stand up. Stand up to Richmond. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Warren Murphy, Charles Somon, and Joshua Nicholson.
I hope you guys are saints for being here and tolerating all this cabo show. Pardon me for reading because I don't speak very well. It's a new mouth. I just had it put in. My name is Warren Murphy. I moved here from Communist Occupied New Jersey in two thousand and one, shortly after the towers fell.
I'm in trouble.
I had, yeah, you are, sir. I had minimal exposure to personal firearms at that time. After arriving in Virginia, I was amazed at what freedom actually was in real America, apparently as our founding fathers intended. And now I'm a gun owner myself. I enjoy target practice with my friends and my family. I hope to never need my weapon to protect myself, my family, or my friends, although I'm willing to if needed. As I'm now disabled and getting a little long in the tooth, having the constitutional right to protect myself makes me feel like a little less of an easy target or sitting around being prey. I'm not a criminal yet, but once Northam makes me a felon, I'm going to be unemployable as a nurse any longer. And I wonder, maybe you start thinking, I wonder how many other Virginians are in fields where being a felon precludes them from performing their livelihood? So, suddenly, when you're a felon because you're a gun owner and you did not turn in your guns or whatever the actual brass tacks are, is the military, are people who are in the military, are they allowed to be felons? I know as nurses and medical personnel, how many people will be out of their livelihoods? And I don't know what that's gonna do to the state. Anyway, I just want to say the Second Amendment is a right that's noted and guaranteed in the U.S. and the Virginia constitutions, but it's our right, it's a people's right. It's not one that's granted by the state or the federal government. It's something that is just noted that it exists. It's not something that can be taken away from us. And Northam, while he's known for his splendid choices that he's made, such as makeup selection and his opinion on killing living, breathing babies, he doesn't have any right to exert an unfair and unconstitutional restriction on the rights of the people of Virginia. Actions have consequences, and so do elections. Please join us in sending our message to Richmond that our rights shall not be infringed. Thank you very much, and God bless you all for being here.
Charles Somon, Joshua Nicholson, and Tom Duckett.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, I appreciate you letting us talk about what's going on right now. I was born and raised here my entire life. I've voted in every single election since I turned eighteen. That was twenty-four years ago. And for ninety-eight percent of that, I voted Democrat down the line, all the time. After this past election, unfortunately, I am part of the people that got these Democrats the majority. If I thought for a second that they're gonna take that majority and instantly try to overrun the rights of the minority in the state, I never would have voted for them, honestly. Now, the rights of people that were granted to the United States Constitution supersede anything that the state's gonna pass. We are not bound by laws that violate our Second Amendment constitutional rights. Those are unjust laws. There's been plenty of documented cases that talk about it. And I'm glad that you people are here voting on a resolution to, at least just, even if it's just symbolically, let people in Richmond know, we do not support our rights being violated this way. Now, they have to know that before they can do anything about it. And if they don't hear any opposition from people locally, they're gonna do whatever they feel like when they go decide on what laws they're gonna pass. Those laws, in my opinion, are unjust, they're unconstitutional, they have no business being on the docket whatsoever. Now, if you want to change the Second Amendment, you have the right to do that. There are, actually, there are symptoms in place that will allow you to do that. There is a way to do it the right way. You don't just supersede the federal law with the state law. You have to go through the channels. You have to get two-thirds of the House and Congress to sign off on that. Then you have to get brief force of the states to agree with that. Or you can do a constitutional convention. But until that happens, you cannot change the United States Code. And I'm the father of two small children, okay? Two girls. Couple years ago, there was a spate of rapes that were going on in Virginia Beach. Now, whether or not they're allowed to hold firearm on their person can be a very big deciding factor on whether or not they are gonna have their lives and their well-being threatened. I'm not gonna stand by and risk my daughter's rights to not get raped, to not be murdered, to not be violated, taken away from them. Okay, I'm very sorry for the people that died, but bad people are gonna do bad things. And it takes good people willing to stand up and not let that happen to stop that from happening. People are gonna be crazy. They're not gonna stop that, unfortunately. Please do not take people's rights the way to defend themselves. That's not gonna stop anything. It's just gonna make things worse. Only criminals will have the guns at that point. And I'd like to mention in Section two forty-two of Title eighteen of the U.S. Code, it makes it a crime for a person acting under color of any law to willfully deprive a person of a right or privilege protected by the Constitution or laws of the United States. For the purpose of Section two forty-two, acts under color of law include acts not only done by federal, state, or local officials within their lawful authority, but also acts done beyond the bounds of that official's lawful authority. If the acts are done when the official is purporting to or pretending to act in the performance of his or her official duties, persons acting under color of law within a meaning.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you for your time.
Joshua Nicholson, Tom Duckett, and James Tack Barry.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, citizens.
I know Virginia Beach shooting is still fresh in everybody's mind. Gun control and policies are what assisted in the event happening. Virginia Beach policy prevented employees from carrying a firearm while at work. The employee who conducted the shooting didn't care about this policy and armed himself, carried out the tragedy. Just on December 19th, I provided first aid to an individual shot in my neighborhood. As a combat veteran and illegal gun owner, I jumped up to and reacted, armed myself, ran to the scene. Shooters were already departed. They fired nearly 30 rounds from handguns. The time between the end of that shooting and cops arriving on scene was roughly 10 minutes. That's 10 minutes. Had the shooter stayed, they could have inflicted more damage. It is never too soon when discussing these topics, especially when certain city council members were vocal nearly immediately after the May 31 shootings, to restrict even more rights of the people. After losing the Civil War, southern states quickly adopted the Black Codes, laws designed to reestablish white supremacy by dictating what the freedman couldn't and couldn't do. One provision barred blacks from owning firearms. To enforce the gun ban, white men, writing and posses began terrorizing black communities. In January 1966, Harper's Weekly reported that in Mississippi, such groups had seized every gun and pistol found in the hands of the so-called freedman in parts of the state. The most infamous of these disarmant posses, of course, was the Ku Klux Klan. Gun control is people control. Individuals such as freedman Louis Hayden understood this. He was not alone. Black abolitionists, especially those involved in the abolitionist underground and vigilance committees, tend to arm themselves. Fugitive slaves often resorted to armed self-defense when confronted by slave catchers and law enforcement. In the case of universal background checks, your most affected group is undocumented immigrants. They are affected by the largest margin, a 100% margin. You have prevented all undocumented immigrants in your state from defending their homes and their families, every single one. Now, we're all aware that undocumented immigrants are the most affected demographic of universal background checks. Involving the government and private party discretion prohibits them at a 100% margin from firearm ownership. As this is your most affected group, this is ultimate product such a law. When you've made that case, that one amendment does not apply to an entire group of people, you've made the case for the rest of the amendments not applying. Ultimately, you devolve back to FDR internment camps rationale or border detainment rationale. You're doing the same thing. From Maj Torre, owner of Black Guns Matter, if African-American males are likely to die-
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it.
Tom Duckett, James Tack Derry, and David Nevillestein.
Tom Duckett from the Lynn Haven District. How you doing? Keep it short. This is a symbolic resolution you're about to pass, and you will pass unanimously, right? But symbolism means a lot, and we want you to send a loud, clear, and convincing message to Richmond to back off. They don't need to be doing this stuff. There's a lot of other things in the state that need to be done, and it's not gun control. Secondly, as has been said many times, when your life is in jeopardy and seconds count, the fine Virginia Beach Police Department is only minutes away. I don't want that to ever have to be said about me. Lastly, it's ironic that the governor wants to empty the prisons of criminals and felons and drug dealers and fill those cells with law-abiding citizens. That's not the way it's supposed to work. So please pass this unanimously, and we appreciate your vote and putting in the long hours tonight on a Monday night, so.
Thank you very much, sir.
James Tack Derry, David Nevillestein, and Sandra Diddy? I'm not sure.
Welcome, sir.
What I was going to say has changed quite a bit over the course of the day. I was first going to speak about the bill that holds the firearms instructor responsible for crimes. Then I decided, after reading Councilmember Towers' letter, that I was going to speak about how despicable it was that he was concerned about the tourist money. Then, changed my mind again, I just want to ask you a couple of questions. Looking in the future, if we lose this freedom, what's next? So we're going to be here next year, two years from now, having the same conversation, talking about a religious sanctuary city? A year after that, are we going to be talking about a freedom of speech sanctuary city? So just think about, we lose this, what's next?
Thank you.
David Nevillestein, Sandra, sorry, Diddy, maybe, and Gazin Karitas.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmen.
Welcome.
I agree to speak tonight because, well, I was concerned that there weren't going to be enough voices. Thankfully, I was mistaken. But I sent an email to Governor Northam about the dismay on his decisions and that we have better options. I didn't get a response, so I just want to ask you all to pass this resolution and pass the message personally to him that says that we do have other options and that we need to explore those options. This is not the way we need to go down this road. Anyway, like I said, I sent an email, didn't get a response. I'm asking you to pass this resolution, send a clear message to him so that we can get something accomplished. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And one last thing, I just want to pass on, an armed society is a polite society, as you can see.
Sandra, sorry, I can't read the handwriting. Diddy, maybe? Gazin Karitas? Jim Karitas? Paul Lima? You're fine, sir.
I've been here nine hours too long.
After Mr. Lima, it's Timothy Hamm and Sherry Hedrick.
Welcome, sir.
Mr. Mayor, Council members, thank you very much in giving me this opportunity to speak. I was prepared to say a lot, but the people out here took a lot of the wind out of my sails, except for one thing from my experience. I am 66 years old. I'm a 22-year Navy vet. I've been to over 25 countries. I spent my time on the Black Sea, Central America. During Central America, I've been shot, stabbed, and blown up. I've seen bad people do some very terrible things. Those of us who have served, some of our constitutional rights were suspended so that everybody in the United States can enjoy the pleasures and benefits of the Constitution. So this is what I had, I think this is what kind of bothers me a lot, is that I'm not offended, I'm insulting. I am very, very insulted. People like myself, we defended your rights and your amendments, I mean, the Constitution. We were suspended. I retired with 44 years serving this nation, 22 years as a defense contractor, sending my guys to Kuwait to prepare the Marines and the sailors to do what business they had to do. Okay? All I'm asking is for you to defend my rights now. I paid the price. Every morning I wake up, I feel the pain. And what really bothers me is when I go up to New York and see my family up there, it's like I'm in the, I am in a city full of Bolsheviks. They don't know, they live in a bubble. We had a Navy SEAL up here, okay? He's seen stuff. It's easy to say, one minute of being fired at, things change. I was patrolling up and down the river in Central and South America. Part of the intelligence says, good to go, we're doing a humanitarian assignment. That was our mission. And what happens is, we come around a bend, we got RPGs, we got ambushed. And now, I am very sorry, I really had prayed for those that had died here. But the thing is, the guy was a nut job. And he was identified as a nut job, and nobody did anything about it. Nobody! So don't blame me. It's my responsibility to take care of my family, not you!
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you very much.
Timothy Hamm, Timothy Hamm.
Hey, please.
Timothy Hamm, Sherry Hedrick.
Welcome, sir.
Yeah, welcome, Your Honor, Your Honor, Council members, Senate Manager. I'd certainly like to thank all of you for taking the time out of your evening. I've seen all of you putting in the time that we have, so I thank you. Also like to take this time to thank the men and women of the Virginia Beach Police Department and Sheriff for their service and courtesy to everybody here this evening. We're here tonight because we have two directions with respect to this issue on our legislation. We can not only enable but empower citizens to assist in providing for the common defense of we the people. Two Sundays ago, we witnessed a brave and well-executed takedown of one who willed evil against people exercising their First Amendment rights. The other direction we can go is we can give ourselves a false sense of security by standing by, allowing anyone who exercises their constitutional rights to keep and bear arms to be criminalized. Half a year ago, we witnessed a total slaughter in this very city, many of whose servants were denied that right if they wanted to get a paycheck. They couldn't bring it inside if they wanted to get a paycheck, couldn't do it. A recurring motif amongst mental health patients and recovering alcohol and drug addicts is, and I quote, "I cannot control what other people do. I can only control what I do." I spent several summers during my time in college in auto manufacturing. One of my projects involved the analysis of certain systems, very complex systems that we ran in the plant. As I learned firsthand, any man-made system is fallible. No system of laws, security devices, or procedures can guarantee that a bad actor is denied access to a firearm. What we can do is enable and empower the common man, who is in the right place and at the right time, to have what they need to take down an attacker. And before I forfeit the rest of my time, it was mentioned earlier that a lot of people will be instantly criminalized once this passes. Show of hands in the audience. Who's going to lose their job if they become a felon? I yield back the rest of my time. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak, and God bless Virginia Beach.
Thank you.
Sherry Hedrick, Rich Pacansky, John Sweeney, Caleb Kanas. And then the last speaker registered is Andrew Jackson.
Welcome.
Welcome. Thought I was the last guy, but it sounds like Andrew Jackson's coming up after me, so would have got it ended. But I appreciate you all being here. I know you're working late, so thank you for your time, Mayor and City Council members. I'd like to just express the way I feel about the gun control legislation being pushed by our Governor Stalin. I'm sorry, forgive me, Mal. I'm sorry. Let me look it up real quick. Northam, Governor Northam. I do have a question for the council, though. Is he the one in the white bed sheets or with the shoe polish on his face? All jokes aside, that guy's a loser, and this legislation is terrible, and it is aggressively coming after our rights as American citizens. I know that we don't have to agree on all the hairs we split over the Second Amendment, but this particular piece of legislation is egregious, and I am not, frankly, I'm not very familiar with most of you on the council and yourself, Mayor. But I trust that you do have the interests of the people at heart. And if that's the case, I trust that you will vote yes on this resolution and that we'll send a message all the way to Richmond to let them know that the Second Amendment, it can't be infringed, not in this state, not in the city of Virginia Beach. So members of the council, Mayor, Barbara, I implore you, in the name of freedom and in the spirit of 1776, vote yes on this resolution. God bless.
Thank you.
Andrew Jackson.
Andrew, welcome.
My name is Andrew Jackson. Sounds familiar. There's somebody else that had that name. Let me first say, I don't know if I've ever attended council where we had so many constitutional scholars, so many folks that were willing to stand here and talk about history and slavery and all the rest of those things. I've never seen that many, but I'm glad. I'm glad. And maybe you will continue your studies of our history of the country. That's a good thing. But I want to talk about this thing called the Second Amendment, which everybody claims is going away. I don't see it going anywhere. It says it shall not be infringed. It says that a well-regulated militia, being necessary to the security of a free state, the right of the people have to keep and bear arms, shall not be infringed. I haven't seen anything that's infringing upon that. What it does not say is that the right to bear arms cannot be regulated by common sense. It does not say that everybody has a right to do whatever they please with their weapons. It does not say that. There is some matter of common sense that goes into every single law that's on the books, whether we like that law or not. And there is never a right way to do wrong, not ever. I listened to some of this, and it's like, if I feel like getting a tank ride down the street, that would be okay. That's not common sense. I can get anything we want, but I will ask everyone in here, if you have any children, grandchildren, great-grandchildren, like I have, in the school system, would you want that classroom that your child is in to be present when a person walks in with an automatic weapon, AR-15? Would you like that?
Okay, we hold comments, please.
Nah. You would not like that. And if you say you would-
Please, please.
I didn't talk when you spoke, shut up.
Okay, please, okay. Time is up, sir.
That's good enough. I've said what I need to say.
That's all the speakers, sir.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you all for a good discussion, both sides, and thank you for the civility. Do we have a motion?
I'll move the adoption of the resolution.
Do we have a second? Discussion. Yes, Rosemary?
In all my years on the council, I've never voted on an item that had this much passion that I really wasn't able to-
Sorry. In all my years on the council, I've never had to vote on an item that had such passion that I really wasn't able to be part of the decision. I'm not a gun owner. In fact, I don't remember ever pulling a trigger. What I do know is that we live in the safest city of our size, and as elected official, I have to defend the constitutional rights of everyone. Living in America, there are times we don't agree with due process and other rights that are privileged of living in this country. However, the framers, in their wisdom, for the good of it all, wrote the Constitution with amendments which are not easy to add. In fact, the ERA amendment was proposed in 1923, almost 100 years ago, and it still hasn't passed. Upon taking my oath of office, I swore- Upon taking my oath of office, I swore to uphold the Constitution and all of its amendments, not just some. This vote is for constitutional city, and a no vote would violate my oath. And tonight's vote is just an affirmation of our support of our sacred oath of office to our great country. And I look at it as that for all the amendments.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Well said.
Okay, vote is open.
I would...
Okay, I'm sorry.
This has been a difficult discussion for me, and it has indeed been a difficult discussion for our Virginia Beach community. Because the issue before us divides people. It divides our friends, it divides our families at times, colleagues, and our neighbors. And it has divided us at a time when we desperately need unity in our city, in Virginia Beach, and throughout our Commonwealth, and in our nation. And the most frustrating part about the scenario we find ourselves in tonight is that I truly believe we want the same thing. We want to live in a safe community, and we want our rights protected. And my sincere hope is that everyone involved in this discussion, no matter where they stand on this issue, will commit themselves to advance and to support reforms that respect citizens' constitutional liberties while at the same time embracing legitimate, common-sense efforts to keep guns away from people who should not have them and to make our communities safer. We just concluded a very spirited campaign season where almost all candidates referenced, and they promised, reasonable and common-sense reforms to promote public safety. And I do believe that most people support reasonable reforms. I know I do. You can count me among those who do support reasonable reforms to promote public safety. And while it is true that the General Assembly does create laws that relate to firearms, not city councils, I do find it common and appropriate for city councils to make recommendations and to share our perspectives with the General Assembly. And legislatures often take actions that raise constitutional questions. And the Commonwealth-wide discussion that we're having today, this evening, and is occurring in chambers like this across our Commonwealth, was prompted by certain prefiled legislation for the 2020 General Assembly session that many citizens believe would threaten their constitutional rights. And I've heard and I understand those concerns. And I've also heard and understand the concerns of residents who rightly and fairly have endorsed and expect common-sense reforms that would make our communities safer. The resolution before us asks that when the General Assembly convenes, it take actions that are in keeping with the liberties that are protected in our founding documents. And I know some of my friends are troubled by how this resolution will be perceived or possibly how it would be misconstrued, and I do understand that perspective. But what the resolution actually does is emphasize our respect for the Second Amendment and for the Constitution. And I'd like to say, state for the record, that I not only support the Second Amendment, but I support all the amendments and the entire Constitution. And after great consideration, I will vote yes this evening to affirm my oath of office. I will vote yes to support the Constitution of the United States, and I will vote yes to support the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia. But this resolution isn't an end to a conversation. It should be the beginning. I hope it's the beginning of a conversation where no matter where we stand, we can find areas of agreement that are truly reasonable, effective, and respectful of our Constitution and will make our communities safer. And I'm happy to engage in that discussion with all of you. Thank you for being here, and thank you for taking the time to share your perspective with this council.
Thank you. Sabrina?
I would first like to start off my comments with a quote. "When a General Assembly passes new gun safety laws, they will be enforced and they will be followed. These resolutions have no legal force, and they're just part of an effort by the gun lobby to stroke fear," said Attorney General Herring. This is a statement made by our Attorney General about this matter that is before us tonight. I have observed the movement from the onset. Since the Democrats won the majority in the General Assembly in November, there has been a concerted effort to spread fear and confusion regarding the Second Amendment in this state. This fear has spread from city to city, and now it's reached Virginia Beach. But tonight, we are not moved by fear. We are Virginia Beach strong, not Virginia Beach scared. What we must do before passing such a resolution is have dialogue on both sides. I started this dialogue in October 2019 by inviting both parties to sit down and talk. During this time, I learned that both sides have more in common than they do have differences. For instance, both sides believe in the Second Amendment. Both sides want to address gun violence. Next, I also learned that we can take small steps to make our communities safer, and it encompasses the following. First, implementing active shooter awareness training. Next, implementing conflict resolution training in our schools, in our workplace, and in our community. Next, having more tough conversations and frank conversations on gun violence. Four, creating a safety plan for our municipal buildings to include metal detectors. Five, implementing background checks and red flag legislation. More discussions like these...
Please.
...need to take place. However, until we do, I'm unable to support this measure. Additional dialogue must take place because currently both sides are not represented here today. There is a serious unbalanced discussion taking place here tonight. We need a more centralized position and a more centralized resolution. Let's look at a solution. This matter must be handled by sending this issue to the General Assembly in our legislative packet. The solution lies in Richmond, where legislators were elected to address this very important matter. We must urge both Republicans and Democrats to work together to ensure that both sides are represented in legislation. Finally, please note, upholding the Constitution is very important to me. I also took the oath. I took the oath to uphold the Constitution, to also uphold the Constitution of the Commonwealth, but I also said that I would faithfully and impartially, impartially, carry out my duties. This matter is not being handled in an impartial manner. It's not being handled in a very balanced manner. Furthermore, I was not elected to take sides. I was elected to be impartial and make decisions based in the best interest of the entire community. This resolution does not reflect the entire community, nor does it reflect both sides of the issue. Therefore, I move that this resolution be postponed until this matter can be handled fairly and with impartiality. Thank you.
Is that... Is that a substitute motion?
Yes.
Do we have a second on that?
I'd like to speak before.
Okay.
You know, I caution everyone here tonight to think, to reason, to not be... The mics are so far away. Caution everyone here tonight to think, to reason, to not be driven by fear of prefiled bills that may never see the light of day. I heard about sides, this side, that side. You look around this room, there are no sides. It's just us, just Americans. And since Thomas Jefferson was mentioned so much tonight, he also said, "I never consider a difference of opinion and politics and religion and philosophy as a cause for withdrawing from a friend." From a friend. In my lifetime, I experienced two mass shootings, two more than anybody should have to experience in any lifetime. The first was the deadliest school shooting in our nation's history. I was a senior at Virginia Tech, when 32 of my classmates were shot and killed, 17 wounded, six other jumped out of a building and injured themselves through glass, and no bigger than this, no wider than that. The second right here in my hometown, 12 of our own killed, four wounded, and a city that'll be scarred forever. I was at the old Kellum High School where we sent families to find information about their loved ones. I walked down that long hall with them into a room with four or five chaplains standing around, telling families on both sides of this issue their loved one was no more. I remember seeing the fear in some eyes, the anger, the helplessness. But in all their eyes, I saw the pain, the pain that I carry with me every single day. And on May 31st, I saw how this tragedy, and I spoke how this tragedy could define us and bring us together. I saw how it did that. Learned that from my first experience, my first experience. I understood on May 31st, 2019, like I clearly understood back in April 2007, that ultimately each and every one of us want to feel safe. We want our kids to feel safe in their schools. We want our loved ones to feel safe at work. We want to feel safe in our homes. Heck, we enjoy the pastime of recreational shooting and hunting with camaraderie with our family and friends. We can accomplish that and the Second Amendment at the same time. I reject the framing that it's either-or. I refuse to believe that there is no answer. And I will not let political ideologies erode our common sense and our common goal that each and every one of us share, saving lives, protecting yourself, protecting each other. We can do better. We can do better. We must do better. Elected officials from the local level to the highest office in the country uphold the Constitution. And before every council meeting, and it's so ironic because we didn't do it tonight, we stand alongside each other and our colleagues, and we pledge our allegiance to our country. And what is it that we pledge? What is it? We pledge that no matter our differences, we are one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, if you still wonder where I am, let me be clear. I will uphold and defend the Constitution of the United States in its entirety. That includes the Second Amendment. I'm a gun owner, also hold concealed weapons permit, and I understand all mass shootings are not preventable, but some tragedies are, such as the mass shooting at Virginia Tech in 2007. That could have been prevented, and 32 of my schoolmates could possibly still be here today. 12 of our colleagues could still be here today. There is a sensible and reasonable way, but it starts with respect with each other. Respect for our Constitution, state and local, federal and state. By law, we are a dealing rule state. You all have heard what that means. The General Assembly basically determines or give us limited authority. Attorney General of Virginia has made an opinion that states 2A resolutions hold no legal weight. And as I look out in this audience, I see incredible passion and engagement. I'm inspired by many of you, those who served and those who didn't, the disabled, young lady was here tonight, and those who just want their daughters and their sons to be protected, to live in this community, to go to work. You all raised many important concerns, and I'm willing to personally work with you to make sure that our representatives in the General Assembly address these concerns. I commend you all for showing up tonight, utilizing your First Amendment rights and advocating for your beliefs, no matter where you stand on the issue. But tonight, in this resolution, a resolution that this body has not even debated amongst itself, I'm not in favor of it because also it's outside the jurisdiction of the body of position I was elected to. I will not give Virginia Beach citizens a false belief that this body can nullify the Commonwealth's Constitution. I will not sacrifice the soulless of the victims of 531. I am ever mindful of the tragedy that took place here less than eight months ago, and I refuse to play politics with the citizen residents of Virginia Beach. I will work with our state legislators to find ways to keep our city safe while protecting our constitutional rights. And lastly, the sign of leadership and civic responsibility is the ability to focus on what unites us as opposed to what divides us. As the body, I would like to be focusing on restoring the stability of our local government, uniting a city that is still healing, keeping our residents' homes from flooding, finding a city manager, affordable housing, and working to get our city fully operating. Those are the issues in which this body can control and demand our attention. But like JFK said it best, let us not seek the Republican answer, nor the Democratic answer, but the right answer. Let us not fix the blame for the past. It's a new decade, it's 2020. Let us accept our own responsibility for the future. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Moss?
I'll wait till we have the substitute...
Okay, are you gonna second the motion?
I second the motion.
Okay. All right, so we have a substitute discussion, Mr. Moss?
No, I'll wait till we go back to the main motion.
Okay. All right, the motion on the floor is to defer.
Motion is to defer. By a vote of four to six, that motion has been failed.
Okay. Okay, then we have a motion on the floor now to...
We're back to the main motion.
We're back to the main motion, Mr. Moss.
I didn't prepare any remarks for this evening, and eloquence rhetoric doesn't really do justice to liberty. I never liked the word rights because it sounds like it's something that government gives us. And it was very clear the founders always talked about liberty, and liberty is important. And I think when you go back, and I try to always do my homework because I think that's what people expected us to do, and so I went back and I've read the Supreme Court decisions, and particularly D.C. versus Heller and Justice Scalia, who wrote the majority opinion. It's a very scholarly work, and I hope all my peers have taken the time to read that and study it because I do think it gets back to... because I do think it gets back to Mr. Belushi's point about where the common ground is. Because when you read that very scholarly opinion and talks about the historical existence of the right, he makes it very clear that, and talks about and dissects the precision of the language, of the syntax of the Second Amendment, and makes it clear that it recognizes a right of liberty that pre-existed the Constitution's adoption. And if you look at the First, the Second, and the Fourth Amendment, the construction of the syntax talks about infringement because what? It was something that already had existed and wasn't being established by the words, but was being recognized in the words. More importantly, he did a great job talking about where the juxtaposition of where in the syntax the word militia was and went through a tremendous historical explanation that it had, that it was not the controlling expression, that in fact it was the individual liberty that came first and the militia was and came after. So putting that in the context. But he went on to say in that opinion that it was not an absolute right. But he also went on to say that it wasn't an absolute right for government to issue regulation. He went through a number of little tests that you had to walk. Now, it is true because I got emails about Justice Stevens, but Justice Stevens wrote the minority opinion. And under our Constitution, it's the majority opinion that becomes the law, not the minority opinions. But it did show that there was regulations that was permissible. And we're constitutional, background checks, age limits, a number of things. So I think, getting back to the Councilmember Belushi's point, I think there is, in that reasoning, that's where the common ground starts because that sets the parameters for the discussion. And all of it isn't about law. A lot of it's about mental health services and other things that has nothing to do with the Constitution. But I think we get so busy on the two extremes. But when someone says that, well, it has no effect, but guess what? When Thomas Paine wrote the pamphlet on Common Sense, it had no legal standing. But it motivated a whole nation of people and unification and gave them a sense of purpose that fueled the revolutions. So people should never discount words. People should never doubt the expressions that they have and tangible meanings that motivate and create momentum and can create cohesion. Yes, this body has lots of things to do, has things to do with flooding. I wouldn't disagree with any of those things. But why did we form a government? Did we perform a government first to provide services? Or was the Constitution created to do what? To form a purpose of government to preserve our God-given liberties? So that's the most foundational thing that we do. These other things are built on top of that. But to do all of those things, but at the price of sacrificing liberty, is a poor purpose for government to pursue. Now, do I think that's our everyday focus? Absolutely not. There are very seldom that things motivate people this much. But I want to compliment the mayor and the vice mayor for coming up with a resolution that doesn't take sides. I think that's the nice thing about it. How can there be a side on the Constitution? There can't. It's just us. I do agree with that. It's us. There isn't a side. It's a us. And, and there's things in there I'm sure that the people on the right and the left of issues wouldn't like that Justice Scalia supported. But it is the opinion, it is the application of the law. And I, and so I think this is, we're going to move on. We're going to have some discussions, I believe, and I agree with Michael. He's absolutely correct. But I don't think this is because it doesn't have some legal standing that it doesn't mean it doesn't have motivational influences on what happens in Richmond. It doesn't create a bond and it doesn't take sides. It just basically supports what the Supreme Court has said, the meaning and the application of the Second Amendment as was in the majority opinion in Heller, D.C. versus Heller. And if you read that, I think you'll have a great understanding about this resolution and why we can move forward.
Okay, Mr. Wood.
Thanks. And the first thing I'd like to do is, and most of the folks aren't here anymore, but I do appreciate people coming out here. I do appreciate, can y'all hear me now? Okay. I, I certainly do appreciate everybody coming out and, and expressing their, their opinions. And, and you know, I hear people say that both sides didn't come out. You know, most of the information I got came on my email from, from folks. And I certainly got emails on, on both sides of the issue. And, and it was interesting because, you know, you have to go through and just between two o'clock and now, I'd say it was about sixty-three emails, based on what I do. I just kept swiping through and just trying to see if it was a yes, no, whatever, and see if there's anything that, that jumped out at me. But, so, so there certainly was a lot of input on it if people don't actually come here because it's, a lot of y'all that actually come to these meetings on a regular basis know that we don't always get a big crowd except when it's budgets and clearly when it involves the Second Amendment. Because we've never had crowds like this before in my entire time on council. Now, my colleagues are right, this, this has no legal, no legal effect. The Attorney General says that. However, nothing that we send to the General Assembly has any legal effect. When we give an opinion on uranium mining, when we give an opinion on post-Labor Day schools opening, when we give an opinion on anything that we want, it has no legal effect. And people have asked me, we talked about this before, and I understand Mr. Rouse saying we haven't debated it, but that's kind of what we're doing now. When we were in the informal session, we, we talked about, you know, whether or not we, we should, we could send a letter. You know, somebody said, well, maybe you should just send a letter. Well, you know, we can't send a letter without a vote, one way or the other. And that, that's, that's just the way it is. And, and essentially this is a letter that we would be sending to the General Assembly. You know, I could, we could all debate what the founders meant when they, when they wrote the Second Amendment. You know, when I was working on my, my Masters in History, I decided I'd pick a controversy. I had, we had to pick a topic on the, the Constitution and something controversial. So I picked the Second Amendment, did a good bit of research on it. And entire books have been written on the importance of the comma, you know, well-regulated militia, militia comment, all that. And I could go back and I could tell you that Aristotle, Cicero, Machiavelli, Sir Walter Raleigh, all advocated for armed citizenry and certain things. Clearly Aristotle and Cicero weren't talking about guns, but they were talking about armed, armed citizenry. King Henry II, 1181 enacted the U.S.A.'s of arms, which provided for personal ownership of firearms. So I mean, we could debate this issue, but that, but that's not our issue here today. We could debate law-abiding citizens having firearms or not. I was a police officer in Virginia Beach, carried a gun every day when I worked. I was shot at twice. I can tell you I was shot at twice, both times by people who should not have had guns. One was a convicted felon and member of an outlaw motorcycle gang who had a stolen gun. Claims he wasn't shooting at me, but he was shooting at his girlfriend who made the domestic assault complaint. But when the bullets come that way, it was kind of a distinction without, without a difference, I think. And then another one by, by a severely mentally ill person who stole his neighbor's gun and set his house on fire while we were in it. So law-abiding citizens having, having firearms is, is not a bad thing. And it certainly is, is something that we, we should support as, as well as all the other elements of the Constitution. And I would call, call my colleagues' attentions to lines thirty-one through thirty-three. "The City Council hereby expresses its continued commitment to support all provisions of the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia, including the right of the people to keep and bear arms." I, I don't know how I could vote against that. I, I think that, that makes perfect sense to me, regardless of your opinion on whether or not somebody should have fifteen rounds or ten rounds or three rounds or whatever. That, that's not the topic that, that we're talking about here. We're talking about protecting people's rights. And we are sending a non-binding, something that holds no legal press, no, no legal weight to the General Assembly, like we have done on countless other things that, that are in our, our legislative package. I think we've got two or three in tomorrow's agenda. It's kind of all blending together. I keep thinking this is Tuesday. But on, on other items that, that we're adding into our legislative agenda. So, so this is what we do, and it's, it's not a bad thing. If, I, I promise you, and I would tell you this because, you know, just like Mr. Rouse and a number of others here, the mayor and I spent an incredible amount of time here the weekend of May 31st. And, and I speak for myself, and I hope I would speak for, for the rest of my colleagues, that, that we would never do anything to dishonor the memory of, of the people who died that day. And I don't see this as, as doing this. I, I think it is, is very simple. I think it's, it's very concise. It doesn't please everyone. Nothing pleases everyone. But, but I think when we, when we say we're expressing strong support for the Constitution, I, I think that's, that's pretty clear. So obviously I'm going to vote for this.
Okay, Sabrina.
I'd just like to say, in reference to the comment that you don't see how anyone can vote against this, I want to make sure you understand that my vote against this is not because I don't support the Constitution. I actually don't support the way this measure and this resolution was handled and put forth. It should have been more discussion. It should have been more input.
Okay, please, 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 respect, please.
Thank you. It should not have been expedited on the basis of one specific side. It should not have been set forth for a special session based on one specific side. That's what I see, and I don't agree with it, and therefore my vote on this resolution is no. More dialogue needs to take place before we do something like this. And the reason I vote no is not because I don't uphold the Constitution. It's, there is a saying, it's not what you do, it's how you do it. The manner in which this resolution was set forth was not proper, was not protocol, and I do not support it.
Okay, Mr. Wood.
If I could respond to that? Well, first off, I did not say I didn't see how anyone could. I said I did not see how I could not vote for it. I'm not going to, to cast dispersions on my colleagues. They certainly have their ability and, and right to vote how they want. I would vehemently disagree that this was done improperly or, or outside of any sort of protocol. It was certainly done legally and, and people were involved, but you certainly have your right to do that. It, it is very simple, it's supporting the Constitution. And that's, that's, that's my, my view on it. I understand people take other views, but that's fine.
Yeah, well, I, well, I understand that, but I would say I just, I got it in my Friday package. And the first time we discussed it was today. That's not enough time for an issue as important to this community as this is.
Folks, please.
So you're right. In my opinion, we could have done a better job, and we can do better.
Ms. Hennig?
No, I'm sorry. No point, thank you.
No point. Okay, if I could just make a final comment or two. You know, I look at this in three perspectives, and I agree wholeheartedly with my colleague, Mr. Rouse, that, you know, we are in the process of healing. And, you know, I, I look at this as a perspective of being a mayor, going a tough time with a dedicated council, also going through a tough time. I look at this as a perspective of a Marine that had learned respect for firearms and as a physical therapist who worked on individuals that were the results of violence over my four decades of being a physical therapist. I had to make a decision, and it was, it was, had to be weighed out whether to confront this right away because once again, it was an issue that came up that is being dealt with throughout this great Commonwealth of ours. This is not unique to Virginia Beach. And I thought a special session was necessary. I think it's pretty obvious that it was necessary because of the time commitment, the, the speakers that came. But once again, you know, I am heartened by the fact that there was civility, you know, there was some representation. But once again, I started off by my saying that I, I always have this thing that good government should never fear and engage an educated public. And when we have a, an emotional tough issue such as this, we cannot discard it. And what we did, and a lot with a number of us, and, you know, it was put out to council members for review. And yes, we did have a logistical challenge that, you know, we had the, the break over Christmas and holidays. We came up with, we thought was a document that would, you know, we know it was going to make some people happy and some people not. We knew that going in, but we wanted to try to at least let the public know and engage that they were listened to, and we have been listening to both sides. And, you know, and I just wanted to say that a decision was made that I hope, and as Mr. Belucci said, and even going forward, that this is not the end of a discussion, it is the beginning of a discussion. And I think what we may have proved tonight, that we can get together and discuss this civilly and find, let's look for areas of agreement going forward. So with that, my hope is that the vote is open at this point for approval. Okay, please.
By a vote of six to four, you have adopted the resolution.
Okay. Okay, that being, that being said, no other business on the agenda, we are adjourned. Thank you.